Get started, we'll get started.
Okay, you should be going.
Okay, since the hour nine o'clock, I'll call us meeting in order and have roll call.
Hess.
Here.
Bobbitt.
Here.
Right.
Here. Cindy Pratt, would you lead us in a word of prayer, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We pray for all those who are out traveling and those who are working in this weather, that you will keep them from harm's way and that they will return safely home. We pray for all those who are less fortunate than we are. We pray that during this meeting, good decisions will be made through your intervention. We're so thankful for all the blessings you've given us and thankful for the blessing of everlasting life. Amen.
Amen.
Cindy, Bobbitt, would you lead us in a prayer?
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the open meeting act.
Okay, consider the, an act on the minutes for the February 11th regular meeting.
You got those out to us early.
I did, yeah.
Yeah, me did.
I was trying to think, did I send those back to you?
Yeah, I know, I was early this, I just thought, I'm gonna whip those out, you know? It's getting much easier. I think about when I first started, it would take me hours and hours, because I'd just ponder over what, you know, how to word it, you know?
Yep. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Right.
Aye. Motion carried. Drumroll, please. Item six, comments from the public on the below agenda items. Seeing there's no comments, we'll go on down to item A, transfers or appropriations.
None.
None, very good.
Been running long.
Item B, purchase orders and travel claims.
I'd make a motion to review purchase orders and travel claims, sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to review purchase orders and travel claims. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Right.
Aye. Motion carried. I thought she was getting her handle.
Well, I was looking at it, because I thought that's the P card stuff.
Okay.
Cindy, I'm wondering if we shouldn't start getting a blanket for our Medford Patriot star, because they, you know, they seem to, they lag in getting those to you, you know? They're kinda like a prior two, you know?
Oh, okay, okay.
So we probably oughta get a blanket every month on that.
All right.
Boy, our utility bill, $915 at the fairgrounds.
Ooh, but they've been renting it out.
Yeah.
They've been renting it out. I know Brandon had his LEPC meeting there last Tuesday, so that, I mean, as long as they're paying for the electricity.
Yeah.
Now, that money goes back into the, the, yeah, rent, yeah, so it goes back in, yeah, right.
Through the treasury, yeah.
Okay, 'cause here's another utilities from Pond Creek for $519. That other was just the electric.
Oh, yeah.
To City of Pond Creek?
Well, gas, excuse me, it was gas.
Because the electrics through the city, I believe, and the, and the electric and the water and the...
We owe the penalty on our unemployment, our unemployment.
Yes, and I...
That's the last one for that one.
I think I found, I mean, I'll be honest with you, it's just getting it all straight and...
The dates, the deadlines.
Well, and part of the, part of the stuff you do online, part of it you don't do online. And it all had to do with mailing.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
You know, it got there, I think, one day later.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, I, I am very, I've gotten more organized on that and created myself a list of when things were done.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we could, um, do some kind of a spreadsheet that showed us what our utilities are on the fairgrounds and what was rented. Like, I know sometimes the rent's paid ahead of time, so it didn't necessarily rent it that month.
Right.
But I was wondering if that, I wonder, yeah, for, from each one, if we could somehow maybe, uh, figure out which, you know...
Income versus expense.
Yeah, yeah, something like that, and see what we've got on that.
See if they're keeping up with themselves and charging enough to keep up with it.
Why don't we see if we could figure out something on that, maybe? Oh, that's the last one in that folder. This is a new folder. And that's the only one in that folder. Wow, we're paying August salaries?
Yeah.
For August?
Well, Sean, like, she did show the percentages.
Oh.
Uh...
I thought we could get away with that, we did actual...
See, that's what I thought, too, but, but, right here.
Yeah, twenty, twenty.
I know there was discussion about that, how much they was charging for each person, and they had it out. Them were all rounded numbers, before we used to get a .0875.
So, for one month, for one month, our health department salaries, just the salaries, are $19,183 for August and $14,000 for September? I don't know, that, that, that seems extremely high.
How many, because how many points?
Right.
Well, it's got several listed.
I, I'd like, I think we oughta pull those for review, you know? We had to do that before, because they just, they see that we get that, that adverberium, and they see that we've got the money, and they just start billing us for stuff that isn't ours.
So you think we oughta...
And you're lucky to me, because I thought it was...
Because you said on the board, what they say, so...
Well, what I can do is, I will just, um, because this doesn't really say who or what, it just...
You know, they, they just do a percentage. It used to be they had a clock, and it would be, like you said, sometimes it'd be .825 or 1.7 or something, so... Let's, let's get some more information on those. That's the last one in that folder.
Blanket, right here. Blanket, $200.
Oh, wow. They should mean better to get that on there. Treat that folder very gently. It's about to have a look.
We're gonna have to get some duct tape, I guess.
How do you come up with a 28.125 on quantity?
I don't know.
Is that hours?
Well, it says sales, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does say sales.
It's even numbered over here, but I don't understand that.
It's for six months, so they pay that twice a year?
Evidently. Nine thousand.
Do that for a second, I'll do a little bit of something on that.
What's the reason for CAD system, if a sheriff department can...
That's just, that's just their program, they, they run. Yeah, well, yeah, I didn't know that, so... I don't know, I'm just asking, it's right here.
Hmm?
Asking, he's in here.
What's the CAD draw, what's the computer aided drawing used for?
No, it's computer aided dispatch.
Dispatch, okay. I was used to drawing, okay.
Oh, yes, that can call as CAD.
Yeah.
It's a CAD.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Too many acronyms.
That's the last one for that folder. Thank you. That's the last one in that folder. Oops, sorry. That's the last one. Max your fast.
I know. Going right through to that here.
Uh, that's all of those, these are, these right here are separate ones, so... That's all of those for that folder.
Okay.
Oh, you got one, one more. Oh, here's one.
Yeah.
Oh, shoot.
This all, I want?
Yeah, that's it.
Here's something we don't see too often, a process date, 2nd/4/2019, received date, 2nd/1st/2019.
Interesting.
Yeah.
We just had a package from the clerk's office, and they thought it was from Ice Machine for the Lamont Park, so they, I didn't see it, but it was a whole bunch of things. They opened it up, they'd sent it to the wrong place, and it was Frito Lay, it was like these big, these are hang chips on it. So they're like, no, it must be the Fairborn. And then we get to looking at the tickets, like, no, it says Frito, it's supposed to go to Frito Lay.
Oh, my gosh.
And somewhere in California, and so I said, call FedEx. So, I mean, they came that afternoon and picked it up, because there was like, they must've been looking for it, because there was like five or six big, huge boxes in it.
God, we, we could've had a big, nice, big display.
Yeah.
That's the only one in that one. Now, I wanna ask you something. We just renewed Desi's notary, and it was $20, or $20.80, and, and... Now... I don't know, I don't know, did we pay that 80 cents to process that deal? And, you know, she could've put on our P card. And, you know, she could've put on our P card and not got that. Cause we don't pay service charges.
Oh.
And then there isn't any documentation for the $10. I mean, there's a check, but there's not an invoice. So I think we need more documentation on that one. That's the last one for that folder.
I want to ask Cindy about those. You can, the bottom ones you can go down.
These here are the shiny.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
Well, they must've finally...
You what?
They must've finally got, found those assessor signs. You know, they were trying to find them.
Evidently. There was a guy over at Alpha that was talking in the coffee shop and he said, "I don't know. I don't understand all this about government, I guess. I'm not the smartest guy." But he says, "There's always, our commissioners are always buying blankets."
Dear. You need to sign that.
No, I guess you don't understand.
No. We're cold.
Yeah. What were you talking about blankets for?
Got to just cover up those engines on the grater so they can start up.
Exactly.
Hopefully you won't need them.
Yeah, we will. Take care of it with the blade. That was the coffee shop talk this morning was. You know how you, Scott heard this before. You get these guys that gets their fence right out there along the road. And one farmer said, "I just hope it snows in that one mile out there so you guys can peel the snow off and take that fence down." And I said, "Yeah, I know."
Saving a little work.
Yeah, well, he, it's a neighbor's fence and he's complained about it. He wants us to take it down, so.
That's a separate, okay. Yeah, that's the last of those.
Okay, uh... Do we have a motion to approve blanket purchase orders and travel claims?
I saw move to approve the payment of purchase orders and travel claims as presented.
One second. Okay, it's been moved and it's been seconded to approve the purchase order and travel claims. Have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, blanket purchase orders.
I didn't know how you were going to handle these, Cindy. I, I did take the con, the new revised contract up to Stephen. He brought it back to me this morning, so.
Is it, and it's not on our agenda though?
Well.
Oh, and they haven't.
With these blankets.
Yeah, um, uh, we know it's pending and we've been notified legally, so yeah, let's go ahead and process them.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. That was, yeah, cause I'm gonna mail the documents out today.
Yeah, right. Very good. Thank you.
Well, is this, Cindy, is this going?
Um, these are blankets. No, that's it. And you can call Alex on that. Those are, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but we've processed it. We're paying it. These are, we're just getting ready.
Thank you.
We expended it, yeah. No, no, not till we finish them. These are, we're just getting them in place today. They'll be effective today. So anything we buy from here forward, we can put on this blanket.
Did I hand you three?
Two.
Okay, there's just three of these blankets?
Oh, the rest are over here.
Okay, but these are the areas that you had.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yes. Yes, we, we got to split. We used to have one just with her, years and years ago, between the two of them. And then she's brought up documentation that said they owned the minerals. Well, they found out about it and said, no, it was a gentleman's agreement. So they're going back to splitting it.
Oh my god. Okay, okay.
So that was why I was asking about it.
But we had to get it, we have to get a new contract. We have to get a new contract. But we, we've been notified. I'm sorry.
Do you want me to just get those later? Yeah.
These are blankets, yeah. But since we've been notified, we're honoring it.
Right, right, right. Well, I thought there was, there was two of them.
There are there, but we already had one for this one, but we're already splitting them. And we're paying them every two weeks because we ran into that as a problem.
Yeah, I know. They jumped me about, been a while, well, about Christmas time, about getting paid. We had it in the process then, so.
Well, you know, like I said, we don't run out of it every day. You know, sometimes we'll run out of it for a solid month and then we might not run out of it for two months. And then they think, well, you're not paying them.
Exactly.
So we just decided, you know, we send it, it's more work for you. You have to like send them a $39 check or a, or $250 check, but.
Yeah.
It just is what it is.
It is, exactly.
I need a motion to approve our blanket purchase orders.
I would move to approve blanket purchase orders.
All second. It's been moved and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Bye.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry. This is on item, this, these are a copy of the minutes from the city of Medford. They requested a, and I have visited with Penny. Um, and she has a copy of this as well. And then we will run it through the excise board before we actually set up the account. Um, they've requested just like a sub account for travel, so this will be the new number.
Okay, item D, new account for the Medford Fire Department Sales Tax. Travel per request of the Medford City Council.
I don't see any problem with it. Do you see any problems?
They had one, they had requested also in their minutes for the Medford ambulance, but we already have it. It already exists.
It already exists.
This one, they just didn't have one. They didn't have it, or excuse me, they had one for fire, but not for ambulance.
Not for ambulance, okay.
I suppose they're sending people to training and need to reimburse them. I don't see a problem with it.
Nope, I don't either.
Um, so we need to make a motion to set up a new account for the Medford Fire Department Sales Tax. Travel at the request of the Medford City Council, per the approval of the excise board.
Yes, that is, that would be good.
Okay.
So I take it that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Then I'll second it. Okay, and Dean seconded that motion. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye. There's no place for us to sign here. We'll just sign at the bottom here.
Okay, that, that's mine.
I mean, that's, that's a copy of the minutes, but yeah.
Yeah, I'll just keep that on file.
Okay, item E, notice to bidder O2 2019 for the Waukeeta Fire Department Building Project, Jody Evans.
Okay, now, here's the note, now, here's what he sent me, but this being Tuesday, we need to bump it out. So I revised it. Here's the revised, because it needs to publish for two weeks.
And wait, and on, is this, what are they building? Are they building?
The fire station.
I think it has to go under Title 60 bids, Cindy, and I think that's three weeks.
Well, I went back and looked at, yeah, I did go back and look at the Kyler publication.
Okay, got you, okay.
And we kind of followed the same guidelines of them.
Alrighty.
So, and they did it for two weeks and then, and then I gave, and then I bumped it out where it'll go be two, they have two weeks after the closing of the bid.
To review it and look at.
And then they can come back and present to the board the findings.
Max, have you looked at that?
No, I haven't looked at all of it.
I've got some copies here.
Okay, of all the, of all this that you give us?
And then, I mean, and he actually liked, Jim McKey has brought me the, Joey brought me the.
That's, that's what they turned, just, um.
Yeah.
Okay, this is what, we changed the dates on.
Changed the dates. Yeah, okay. So, okay, and what do, I'm sorry, Cindy, go ahead.
Um, I do have on a, a thumb drive, the specifications and the specific, the specifications and the proposal, but it's about 600 pages.
The dates are the same.
Well, this is what they originally had turned in and where she changed that.
Changed it to this. Okay, so here's a copy of this.
Yeah, there's an extra copy, okay.
Oh yeah, this is the one I put for you guys to sign here, so I'll hold it to you.
Okay.
Um, and so I do have that, and I mean, he's got all the documentation, the supporting documentation. Oh, here's kind of the rest of this.
They want to do, they want to make this, so the sealed bids are, are received publicly and opened publicly at the Waukeeta. And then they'll be presented back with a recommendation to our, our board.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. And they were good for the change of the dates when you called them?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, cause I, he and I visited about the dates and I said, you, you know, and he, he understands. We've got to go with the guidelines of. I thought he was gonna be here this morning.
Well, I didn't see him at coffee this morning, so.
And really, if you want to wait till Monday, if you guys want to look at it a little more, it's not going to really make a difference.
No, I, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, they're, they're.
I'll get a copy and put the bid number up here and one for, for you guys to sign here for me to keep on file.
Sounds good to me. Do you have a problem with anything, Dean?
And like I said, anyone who wants to see the specs, and they're gonna put it out online where they can retrieve it and all that kind of stuff, but it's about 600 pages, so.
You probably need to send that to, to Rosie to be able to link it to whatever their link is. Whenever you have her post this for more information, whatever link they're using, have Rosie put that in that link.
Okay, okay.
Their whole, their whole application is 600 pages?
Well, the specification thing is 500 and some pages, yeah.
They got very detailed.
They did.
He goes, Jim McKey is the architect, don't you?
Yeah.
And, and so Jody did say to me, he goes, you know, they kept saying, "Why is it taking so long? Why is it taking so long?" He said, "So I printed out the 500 pages and I let them know, this is why it took me so long, cause I had to go through 500 pages of documents." So, he said he went through and viewed all the documents on it.
I would make a motion to approve the notice of bid for the Waukeeta Fire Department. All second. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Bye.
What is today? The 19th of 19.
I didn't have room to really type her names underneath this, so I just.
Item F, monthly officer's report, January 2019, Assessor, Election Board, Health Department Sheriff, Treasurer, subject to audit. Boy, the health department's a tough one.
Well, it didn't matter how you just stack them up if you wanted. Hello. People never got that back to me yet, so I don't know what you want to do on that, but I mean, I can, they all know who she is, so. Okay, no, thanks, bye.
I'd make a motion to approve the monthly officers' reports for January 2019 for the Assessor, Election Board, Health Department Sheriff and Treasurer, all subject to audit.
All second though. It's been moved and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item G, P card payment to BOA. I think this is total activity, $149.
That was for the tornado summit.
Coming up in March.
Emergency.
And then the other was the SIR report for January February for $28.
Okay.
For Brandon.
Entertaining motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve the two P card payments to Bank of Oklahoma.
All second. It's been moved and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
Let's see, I think there's two of them, Max.
There is, I'm not sure that we have to sign two. I just figured you'd sign one.
You're right, you're right.
Hi, you're up. Thank you.
Now, these are both highway, though.
Well, it says highway.
She did two different POs, remember?
Right, but, so this, that.
There will be two separately.
Oh, I got, yeah.
Um, see, that says highway there. One is highway and one is emergency management, so do we need, we just need one, but.
One that.
Right, but that ought to say emergency manager and highway, maybe?
We can put it on there, yeah. And the P-card state, oh, let's see.
That's the master one.
Master P-card statement. Let's just, if it's EM.
Yes, I would do that, just to make sure.
Like that, that work for you?
Yep, I think that seems, it works for me.
Okay, down to item H, annual LEPC awards.
Yes, so you guys know we've been doing the awards during County Government Month, which, if you guys wanted that, but I got that off the NACO website about County Government Month. Um, but this is the time of year whenever we've been doing our awards, trying to hand them out during County Government Month.
Right.
We had some nominations come in, and I wanted to hand these out so you guys could review them.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I have a spare to give to you on all of these. Okay, so the first one I've got there is for Harvey Phelps. He, oh, sorry, he is a volunteer in Palm Creek, and he runs the after-school program there at the church. He's been doing it for a very long time, and as you can see, they wrote up a little thing about him saying, "For the past twenty-plus years, Harvey Phelps has volunteered his time for an after-school program for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade kids. These programs meet Tuesdays for the fifth and sixth grade, Wednesdays for the seventh and eighth. The program consists of homemade snacks, activities in the gym, singing, and Bible lesson. The program lasts about two hours. Harvey hand makes breadsticks, pizza, and ice cream as a dessert. Drinks are also furnished. Um, this program is funded by donations from various organizations. Um, Harvey has also had singing programs. They have traveled to various places around the state to perform. Harvey has selflessly committed his time to keep this program active for the benefit of the kids. And like I said, he's been doing this for many, many years. And, um, I know that we have our awards, so this was sent to LEPC, and we, we thought about giving him Volunteer of the Year award for his time, and I just wanted to send this to you guys and see if you would approve that.
Okay, so you're going to change his Citizens of the Year to Volunteer of the Year?
Yes, because he does it all volunteer basis, so.
I think that'd be good. Um, can we set up a, a deal where we can present it up maybe in the courtroom during one of our Monday, maybe that first Monday, uh, in April for County Government Month or something? Check with him and see with the organization and we can do it, you know.
That first week in April?
Yeah, maybe, if, if, if he's available or the second week if not, and we could do it, you know, at, like, like ten o'clock or something.
Did I give you that, even that talk letter?
Uh-uh.
You want me to fill it out?
Mm-hmm, please.
You have a blank one?
Yes. First, or second, sorry, um, so that's the first one, um, so I have a couple of it.
Okay.
And the other two, I've got two more here to give to you guys. One is for a Helen Lescon, I think. She works at the Health Department. And these are for letter, just a letter of commendation, just kind of blanket, you guys are doing a great job. We appreciate your effort, type of deal. And we have one other one from the Health Department from Melissa Fedford. Sorry.
How long have these people worked in Grant County?
I am not a hundred percent sure. I know that they work over Health Department. I know both of them travel here, I'm pretty sure, to work at our Health Department. Um, they also serve other counties surrounding the area, so, you know, they are back and forth quite a bit, especially since we've lowered our staffing up here at the, the Health Department, you know, for it to stay active, they have to have people who, who travel around to keep that up. But they were nominated for, like I said, this letter of commendation form. Pretty much all that is, is just a letter stating, you know, that we appreciate their hard work and dedication to their jobs.
I could do that for anybody, though. I'd rather do this one.
Yeah, are we, are we going to have to pick between the?
You can, you, totally up to you. This is for you guys. Our LEPC just takes these commendations.
Uh-huh.
We kind of narrow it down if we have a bunch, and then it's up to you guys to decide how you want to do that and if you want to give them or if you don't.
I don't have a problem with the nomination as a volunteer of the year.
I don't either. I, I think, you know, I don't know that these people have worked in our Grant County Health Department very long. I mean, we've got people that work in a lot of our county offices that we've not done that for. I would rather just give the, this year, the Volunteer of the Year or, that, that's just my opinion. What, what, Dean, what do you think?
Well, everybody needs an attaboy once in a while, no matter how long they've worked or how short they've worked. And, and, but, you know, it's nice to see the longevity and how long they've been going, so to me, it's, it's. I'd like to know how long they worked too, you know, but just out of curiosity.
Well, and they've worked in the other counties and stuff.
Bring that back.
Okay, to clarify this, this letter of recommendation is.
Commendation.
Commendation, is just, just saying, "We support you and think that that's good," or is this an award?
They were nominated by someone stating that, you know, they think that they deserve some recognition for what they do here in the county, and we just thought that a letter of commendation would be a good way to, I guess, just show them appreciation, yeah.
If you could, I'd like to know how long they worked here in Grant County.
Good, I can get that information and then I can bring it back.
Okay, that would be great.
And then I have two more to talk to you guys about, sorry. This one is, was nominated here for Citizen of the Year. Um, we had two nominated, well, I guess we had three nominated for Citizen of the Year. We had this one, Sidney Ray. We had the Harvey Phelps, and then we had one more, what was?
Carolyn Buchanan.
Carolyn Buchanan.
Works at the Wheat Heart Nutrition.
Yes, and we decided to send Harvey Phelps for the Volunteer of the Year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Sidney Ray, you know, she's a child here at the Medford Schools, I don't know if you guys have heard anything about her. Um, but, you know, they wrote up a little piece about him back here stating that, you know, it's a first-grade student at Medford Elementary. You know, she has charity malformation. Um, you know, she's had over fifteen brain surgeries, and we decided through LEPC that we didn't know if that was something that you guys would want to push through for Citizen of the Year, but we thought maybe doing something like a Courageous Spirit Award or something for her. That's why I put that at the bottom there. Um, but I told them that I would bring that to you and that that would kind of be a decision that you guys would make.
I think it'd be good to show support for her at any, any level you could.
And I do too, and that's what I said, you know, she.
I kind of like that Courageous Spirit Award. I, I kind of like that. I really like that. I think that fits exactly what she is.
Yep, I, I do too, because it does take courage to face.
Yeah.
And we can talk to numerous people in our community about cancer and everything that's tied to that.
So, are you guys okay with doing a Courageous Spirit Award for her?
I am.
I am. Um, I would make a motion to, uh, to, uh, present Harvey Phelps with Volunteer of the Year and Sidney Ray with Courageous Spirit Award. And to be presented, you'll have to work that out when they all can come.
When they can all can make it.
In April during County Month, County Government Month.
Okay, and for the last one that we had for the Citizen of the Year, I still haven't gotten the packet from that. That was nominated by her.
I'm the one who, well, I kind of did it on the fly and I got ahold of her family and they haven't sent me back the stuff, but we all know Carolyn Buchanan and has worked at the Wheat Land Nutrition Center for many, many years and.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that's why I nominated her, is I feel like she's helped feed a lot of our Grant County citizens that otherwise wouldn't have had as good a hot meal.
And that's something we probably really need to look at this year, because if, as the numbers continue to go down, it may be a program that we're going to lose in the future, so if you could get that and present it to us.
I think I'll, I'll bring that one back at the next board meeting as well.
Okay.
I'll have that one and then the information for the, the two commendations, but, so we are okay for the Courageous Spirit and the Volunteer of the Year, right?
Well, um, there's a motion on the floor.
Yes, there is. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Bae.
Aye.
Fantastic.
That motion carried, and then you're going to bring back Carolyn?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Thank you.
No, thank you guys so much.
Yes, thank you.
But I will say in their family's defense, I didn't get it to him until last, later last week, so it's my bad. I, it's on, I don't want him to think I'm pushing it off on the family, it was me.
Right, okay. Okay, do we, it's, it's ten o'clock, and I told the, the.
Oh, we changed it to eleven o'clock.
You changed it to eleven. Stephen come down and talked, and he said they got a long, big court docket, and he didn't think they'd be able to make it eleven.
Eleven or ten?
Eleven.
Oh, they won't be able to make it eleven either?
He didn't think that they would make it eleven either.
Okay.
And I told him, I said, "Well, I'm sorry, we pushed it back an hour, uh, you know, to accommodate the people that travel, and we hope that you guys could make it," but he said it, it'd probably be after dinner. Uh, and I said, "Okay," I said, "so we'll move it back to eleven, we'll try to accommodate that." But, but that being said, let's skip over item I for right now and go down to new business. Any new business, Cindy? No? Dean?
No, not that I know of.
Cindy?
Nothing.
Um, I don't have any new business that I won't comment on Commissioner's comment, so. Item nine, Commissioner's comments. Dean, what do you have?
Well, uh, we have, uh, been continuing to do the roads and maintain them as best we can. We're, you know, catching up, we're just doing the fine points. I'll have, uh, I believe a CED meeting tomorrow and, uh.
It's been moved, Dean, to Thursday.
To Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, um, then there was a Fair Board meeting, I believe, on the twentieth in the evening that I'll be attending. And, uh, outside of that, uh, everything seems to be rolling along pretty good.
Okay.
Dean, what, did you go to the Health Board meeting?
Last month, yes.
Yeah, I was just curious, what did, did they, what did anything?
Nothing really transpired, other than normal business. They did not have a quorum to, uh.
Do business, yeah.
Make much decisions, and, and we just kind of met, I met the people and, uh, they didn't, uh, run me out of their car and feather me because I shared them in the meeting or anything. So I, I felt like it went pretty good, and, and we met for about an hour and, and discussed a lot of things, and, uh, their need for new, new building and, uh, more square footage, uh, was brought up, and, uh, and that sort of thing, but it was pretty much just, uh, like I said, when they didn't have a quorum, they, nothing much was decided.
I was just curious.
And that's the Health Department, right?
On the twentieth, I think seven, seven in the evening.
I think it's seven, yeah.
And, and that's the Fair Board meeting?
Yes.
Is tonight?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, yes, twentieth.
Yeah, imagine they're getting ready, imagine they're getting ready for the, fine-tune all the decisions for the fair that's coming up toward, pretty soon.
Okay. Okay, is that all you have?
Yeah, that's about all I have. Like I said, everything seems to be running pretty good so far, as far as equipment and people and stuff like that.
Excellent, thank you. Cindy, what do you have?
All right, well, we've got our bridges, uh, the cement was poured and, uh, we're letting it set to cure. We're hoping to open it up maybe next week, um, depending on weather, of course. But we've got a little bit of, uh, shouldering up still to do on it. We've hauled the majority of the dirt in there, but we've got a little bit of work to do on that, getting it, before we can get those opened up.
Okay.
On our rock project, uh, the, um, ACG has run out of rock. Uh, they're waiting to see if they're going to get a crusher in there or not, so we are going to start hauling out of the leesees over there to, uh, continue on our rock projects, so we'll be working on that. Uh, obviously getting geared up for the prospect of snow this week, uh, knowing that if we need to, we can get out and do what we need to, but if it's blowing the snow, there's really no reason for them to get out and push snow that's going to drift back shut, but, but we, uh, we're getting geared up for that. Um, last week, I spent a lot of time down at the Capitol. Um, this home rule that says, uh, SJR nineteen is actually being heard today. The legislators that I spoke with hadn't heard much about that. Nobody had contacted them. Um, our, our CODO hasn't, our ACCO hadn't. Um, they're very confused. They thought it was just a simple deal. They didn't understand what all it meant. Uh, I sent out emails again this morning, so, um, if people have time, I'd suggest you call or email down there, uh, uh, on that. It's in their committee hearing, but I don't think they understand what that really means, especially for rural counties. Um, also, we did get that out of, uh, out of committee. The thirty million back to our SERB didn't make it out of committee, it just came out of committee, so that's the first step. We've got that, that going on. Um, they're also hearing the bill today on dividing that SERB up between seventy-seven counties. I, I've also talked about how that would be devastating to our program. Um, those are some issues. I've also left Pfeiffer a couple of phone messages and asking him, I could never catch him at the Capitol. He was in meetings, but on this water line, um, bill that he's running to turn it over to the Corporation Commission, I'm not sure they understand that doing that means that we would have no jurisdiction over a right-of-way on any lines put in our ditches, so trying to follow that pretty close. There's a, a lot of, a lot of bills moving out there, and actually, they're moving pretty fast. I think this week is the last week that they'll hear those bills and then they have to switch, switch sides, so, um, a lot of, a lot of bills moving. There's over two thousand bills out there. I think we're tracking, uh, around two hundred on ACCO's side, so, um, we've got a lot of, a lot of stuff going on on that.
Okay.
This week, I've gonna, I've got a, um, NACO conference call at one o'clock today, and then I've got a transportation call on Thursday. I was supposed to maybe meet, uh, Kingfisher County Commissioners has set up to meet with Sanders on that water line permit at eight o'clock on Friday. I was going to try to make that if, if anybody's interested in going down there. I think, uh, Yekk, Yen, I'm not sure how to pronounce his name, Y-E-C-K Senator. He's the Chair of the Royal Caucus down there for the Senate. He was going to meet with us too to talk about that.
That's at Oklahoma City?
No, that's going to be in Kingfisher.
Okay.
At eight o'clock on Thurs, uh, Friday at Kingfisher, so, and you say the, uh, CED meeting has been moved to Thursday?
To Thursday.
And I know we have a legislative meeting to follow on that as well out there, so hopefully I can change my schedule around to, to accommodate. so hopefully I can change my schedule around to accommodate that, so. And that, that's what we've got going on.
Okay. I know it's bad because of the weather coming in and stuff, but for the benefit of everybody traveling is why we changed that. I know that we're looking at this afternoon, this thing coming in and affecting us and later on, but we also know that the travel tomorrow, hopefully the roads will clear between Wednesday and Thursday on that. The sheriff visited with me earlier today on that SJR nineteen. He said that nobody, ACCO hasn't come out against that or nothing. We need to be pushing our representatives to come out against that, and every...
Max, I think we voted at the ACCO legislative to, to not support that. Now, I missed the last two because I was gone, but I think it was on our very first agenda when we discussed that. And why, and I, CODO, I figured they've talked about it.
CODO has, we were at the Capitol in February, and we talked to our legislators at the breakfast. So I don't know if it's just a young rookie group of legislators that doesn't understand what we're talking about.
That's what Scott said, that a lot of new people out there, and that we needed to go ahead and make the phone calls, that people are against it. That gentleman that spoke to us at the statewide meeting said that it's gonna take two or three years, this is not a one-year deal, but it lets it get started and lets it get to rolling and stuff, and this is gonna be bad for, for Oklahoma in general, they believe.
Yeah, this is being run by the City Chambers Association, because they are wanting part of our ad valorem, is what it boils down to, is they're, they're after the money, so.
Okay, but we need to be calling, and Scott wanted me to bring that up to you all, that we needed to call our representatives, legislators, and talk to them about being opposed to this.
Peterson, when I talked to him, was the first time he'd ever been contacted on it.
Really?
Senator Peterson.
Wow, okay. Another thing, this water bill that Pfeifer is running, Farm Bureau, I guess, is getting ready to come out against that big time, is what I understood. But we need to get behind them, you know, I don't know, I can't say how that's being funded or whatever, but it's politically bad for rural counties like us to not be hand-in-hand with what Kingfishers went through, or some of them, about these water lines. And if we don't do something, it's gonna go to the, to the Corporation Commission, and then we're gonna, it's gonna be out of our hands, and we won't have any say on that. So I would try to encourage everybody to make phone calls, and to hit up and see where our legislators stand on that.
Well, I can't get Pfeifer to call me back, he's, he's carrying, it's his bill.
Yes.
And he will not call me back on that, so I don't know, he just, I, I don't, you know, I think his thinking was it was to protect mineral owners, but it, it, it doesn't really do that either, you know? I mean, I guess allows them, but what about the landowners? Not all mineral owners are landowners, a lot of them are segregated, so.
Okay. Well, you seen Bill Casey's updates, they come out with that whole list of, of bills. You know, ACCO bills are moving right along, and we've had fairly good reception so far, I think. These bills that we're gonna have to watch out for, like this SJR nineteen, which nobody thought would gain any momentum, has gained way more momentum than they thought, and so we need to be out there against it. We have a legislative meeting scheduled to discuss at our CED meeting, which has been moved from Wednesday to Thursday. We still plan on having that legislative meeting at that time. We don't know how much snow we're gonna get, one to three inches last night, and then this morning it's one to six inches.
Yeah, I heard that, I heard four to six, yeah.
Who knows what we're gonna get. The thing I hope is, is we don't get the ice before the, the snow. Then we can deal with the snow, the ice is the problem, so, anyway. I guess we've got a water leak over at the, in the jail, down at the bottom on the drains, and we're gonna have to call Scott Posenberg in, and have him give us an update on that.
Okay.
I know this happened over the weekend when we couldn't, but line busted, there's water in the basement.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's not bad, it didn't get into any pumps or anything, but we had to have a plumber come up and put a temporary line in to allow the inmates to do the work.
Oh, I didn't know that, hmm.
Thank you.
I wonder, it was, I thought first she was talking about the French drain or something, you know, where we was, we was getting the water out of the basement, but this is a whole water line.
Evidently, there's a line system that is on the drains, in the floor drains, and then it goes down into the basement and goes over to the sump pump. But the line that is hooked in for the wash machines is hooked into that. And when he come in there, water was up a little ways, which tells me that the sump pump may not be working.
Yeah, that's right.
And Scott was trying to talk to me, and he was cutting out, so I said, "Let's just talk about it Monday, if you've got somebody that's gonna temporarily fix it." He was waiting up here for the plumbing people, was coming, come yesterday and do it.
Yeah, but, I mean, we've had colder weather than this, but if it froze up, unless we didn't get enough cover on it...
He says that it's a line deteriorated in the cement, and it's got dirt and mud, it's, I don't know. I just told him to come talk to us about it, and we can all hear it.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Hello, Scott?
How's everybody doing this morning?
Doing good.
Fine.
We was wanting you to give us an update on the sewer line, the line, the drain line in the, in the jail.
Okay, Friday, I noticed that, there's three drains. There's one that sits right outside my door, one that sits in the laundry room, and then there's one down in the pump room.
Okay.
Friday, I noticed that, when I opened up my door, there was laundry water, right there, at my door. Laundry water in the laundry room, and laundry water in the pit. So we figured, I thought, well, we gotta clog somewhere. So I cleared the water off the pit floor, the basement floor, in the pump room, and I tried to snake it with my little snake, there's an eight-foot section. I got about three feet in there, and my snake bound up, and when I pulled it out, it had mud in my little ring. So I continued to get the water off the floor. It fills up so far, and then it goes over into the pit, but it also runs back into, behind the geothermal pumps. So that's why I pushed the water, make sure it's getting over there into the pit good enough, so that I had no problems. We had to tell the dispatchers that they could not wash any laundry, because it just puts too much water in there too fast. I mean, the pump could probably get it out of there, but, I mean, with that and stuff. It is clear water that's coming out of that drain. There's no dirt, no, it does not smell, it's just clear water like it's maybe a water table or, or something, but that line is broke. Reason how we found out it might be broke is, I had called Tiff to come over and see if he can snake it with his snake. Between that drain that's down there in the pump room, to the pit, where it's supposed to drain into the pit, is about eight feet. He had put eighteen feet of snake line into that eight-foot line. And when he pulled it out, there was nothing but mud. So, his assumption is that the water table is going through that pipe channel, and that's why it's coming up out of the floor, that that pipe is totally gone, and now it's collapsed. There is probably about ten feet of concrete to even get down to that pipe, and stuff to even try to replace that pipe, not ten feet, excuse me, ten inches, ten feet's pretty thick, yeah.
I was thinking, it's eight foot through there and ten feet to get to it, boy, we're in trouble.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me, ten inches. It probably looks about maybe eight to ten inches of concrete, whatever a flooring would be on a thickness, to get down, because that pipe runs underneath there or through there. I'm not for sure what it does, because I can't see. He does not know how far the, the line has been corroded. I mean, it's running, right now, the washer will drain down into the pump room, but that's where it comes out of. And it'll drain outside my door into the pump room and, and everything. So somewhere between that drain and the pit is where it's, we're having a problem too. So what we had to do to make, do, so the sheriff's station could get laundry done over the weekend, Tiff had made a drain system from the washer over, so that it would just drain right directly into the pit and not into the floor. So we had him do that yesterday. The other update is, the ten-ton unit that's up on, I also had them show up yesterday. HVAC, the ten-ton unit on the fourth floor was not operational. They came to start it up, I figured while I was here, it'd only taken about thirty minutes. What their conclusion was with the air tech, was there is too much air in a geothermal system line up there, in that pocket, that they were gonna have to come back and re-purge the whole system, the geothermal. The reason why air pocket got up there, because air is up there. We have no air relief valves up there, and stuff, automatic air relief valves, which the air tech said that we needed to put some on there, so that when that air rises, it can release itself out of there, and we can get air out of the line. They couldn't get it out of the line, he wasn't gonna fire it up until, because he didn't want no air pocket in there and messing up that ten, ten-ton unit. So they're supposed to be back sometime this week. They had to contact Kyler Construction or Ambler Architect, which that might be discussed whenever they show up on that.
Now, over there, we didn't change the HVACs over there, did we?
No, no, this is up on our fourth floor.
Oh, excuse me.
Well, we was over there dealing with that, they showed up, so I figured, well, they're just here to fire it up and make sure we're running, they oughta be in and out of here in about thirty minutes.
That sounds like a engineering flaw or something.
So the air tech wanted me to request to you guys that there should be some air relief, automatic air relief valves up there on the third floor. When I was asked about it, Anthony said that he had recommended it, but that it was not set up in the diagrams or whatever the prints and stuff that I know of. I don't know nothing about it, that's something that I have to be explained with Ambler Architect and Kyler Construction and the other contractors, I'm just going by what this guy. He didn't feel comfortable enough of firing that up with the position that that unit is in, and then walking away with, with all the air that's up, up in there, so.
Well, when Kyler Construction comes, we might need to have you come back over and explain that to him, better, better you than me, or, because I don't know if I'd get it quite right, but...
Okay.
We've also, he never did, I sent an email to Jim about the smell we had in the courthouse here a couple of weeks ago, the sewer smell on that.
Okay, here's, yeah, this thing is, Penny's drain, that drains off of her unit, is tied into the top of a sewer line. Now, they say that they can do that, and stuff. The reason why you got the smell is because that when the units set so long, that they didn't fill up the P-trap with water, so when the unit was fired up, it started sucking there out of the sewer line. And then it spread it out all through her vents. I asked them about, they say that these units are not ninety-five percent condensation units. Their only time that they're gonna produce condensation is in the summertime. So I asked them about the P-traps, and they said that's why they put the field caps on it, because they believe it's gonna be my responsibility to make sure water are in those.
Oh, boy.
The only other way we did, and I had, me and Cindy had talked, and we had talked with Tiff Plumbing, is to run that over into the elevator room right over there, and create a drain there where it can drip into the drain and then go down into the sewer line, and we wouldn't get that, that smell, because it wouldn't be sitting there trying to suck air out, it'll still be dropping water in, so.
I don't know if we'd want that in our elevator.
Yeah.
In the elevator room right there, that's where the line runs, but, I mean...
I don't know, I mean, I don't know enough about it.
It's just something that we'll have to look at, or what we're gonna have to do. Other than that, we're gonna have to see about getting underneath there and rerunning that line to somewhere else besides our top, or otherwise, we're gonna run into this just about every year, unless... I should start checking them once a month, or every two weeks, or anything else, and make sure that they got plenty of water in them, so that they don't...
Well, but when I talked to Jim Hamlin, he said that once they got them going, and it was because they sat there for so long. He said after that, we should not ever have a problem with it, is what Jim's, I'm just going by what Jim said, but he's not, you know, yeah, he's not the plumber, so.
But that, that's, the P-traps are supposed to be large enough, I guess, so when we run them in the summertime, they're supposed to hold that water, so that it don't dry out. But in an occasion, there might be, and then, once it does that, that line, like I said, is connected to that sewer line, and then it's gonna start pulling that air back out of there again, and then she's gonna have the same smell again, and it's gonna...
Okay, you put water in it, then it doesn't...
Yeah, tell her we can get some water. Once Chad put some water into that P-trap, the smell started going away. So it wasn't taking no air out of the sewer line itself. So that's something we needed to bring up, so we can either clarify with Ambler Architect, Kyler Construction, whoever, if there's any other options that we can do with that, or what we can do with it, and stuff, to see if we can make an altercation or anything else to it, so that it's not just sitting right there on that drain line. I'm not having no problems with any other units, it's just that unit, I believe, is the only one that's connected.
I was just gonna ask, is that the only one that goes into a sewer line?
Yeah, I mean, these other ones should be connected into a sewer line somewhere, but for some reason, none are drawing nothing, we're not getting it. The only smell we get, and I think that's because hers is the closest one to the line itself, I don't know. I mean, the rest are on the fourth floor, but they gotta run somewhere and stuff, and I don't know if they got the strength to pull them, to pull them up.
And what was it that Larry Hand said about the six-hundred-dollar piece that could go on the unit?
Yeah, he said, they said that they could put a piece on it, Larry said that they could put a piece on it, and on each unit, but it's gonna be about a six-hundred-dollar piece per unit.
But what would we need on each, each unit if we're only having, I mean, I don't know, I'm asking, I don't know.
I don't know that, because we're not having no trouble with, at this point in time, with any other unit, except for hers.
Well, six-hundred dollars for one might be cheaper than trying to run lines everywhere, which direction and someplace else, and, and we'd know in the future, maybe, maybe, that's an option.
Well, we could try that on that line, where we know we got a problem with, and then try the others to see whether we have any issues.
Right, and if they come up, we know what we need to do, go put water in the P-trap.
And then back to the original, I did call the city to clarify with the city that they didn't have no kind of pipes that were leaking, since it's clear water, and that it created a channel over into the basement. They said, "No, as far as I know, they don't, I've checked both meters, our gauges are not spinning out of control," and stuff, so. The only assumption we can have is that it's a water table that's coming up through that drain. I've been pushing from ten to twelve gallons of water out of there. I came up in the morning, pushed it, and then I came back in the evening, around four or five o'clock, and pushed it again. I mean, it runs over into the pit, but it also has a back deal that it gets back around there behind the geothermal pumps, and that's my concern, is the geothermal pumps. Other than that, I don't know what to do with it and stuff like that, so, I mean, that's something that might need to be put on agenda and discussed about, and, on that, that situation there, so. And that's about the biggest stuff today.
Back to that line, you got a temporary fixed up.
Right, right, we got a temporary line fixed up. We had Tiff run a drain line from the wash machine over, so that the water will flow directly into the, the pump, the pit, and then the pump can take it right out to the discharge of the sewer line. So that it's not going, trying to go through the floor like it used to, and not creating big pockets of water in everywhere. I mean, we already had one pump put in that back in data room to try to limit water there. Now we're, we don't wanna try to be creating water everywhere else, so that was the only fix that we knew of.
So the floor drains in... So the floor drains in washroom and in your, front of your room and stuff are inoperable because of the pipe?
Right, because that pipe, that section of pipe right there that's supposed to drain all those stuff to the pit is either gone or, I mean, totally eroded away or it's collapsed in or anything like that. And it's just, from where that drain is to where it comes out of the pit is probably, I'm gonna say, seven or eight feet at the most. So the section right there. I mean, the rest of it will drain down. But that section was fixed, that's the way it used to be. That water can come out, if it had an overflow in the washroom, it could go down that drain and then it goes right through to the pit. Any water that built up outside my door will drain down and go right to the pit. So, I mean, that's why we're figuring it's that section right in there because there's a connection somewhere where those all connect together and it's not draining into the pit. It's just backflowing.
Right. So to fix that problem, you're gonna have to replace that eight or 10-foot piece of line which has to be below the concrete for the drainage on it.
That, yeah, that I do not know. That's like a discussion with a plumber or something to see what we can do there. I mean, or Kyler Construction, they might know something on how to do that. They might be able to run something in between it where they don't have to dig as deep and run something new in through there. I don't know what it would be and how they can do it. I mean, other than that, I can just buy a little bitty tiny little pump and set it right on top of that drain and keep it plugged in. And when water flows, it'll just shoot it right over there to the pit itself. But, I mean.
But I don't, yeah, I don't know till you get in there. And if you could, you know, kinda like, I think of like a culvert, you know, how you kinda clean it all out. And then, you know, of course, if you put something, if it's already collapsed, you can't slip anything in there. But if there was be a possibility of somehow pushing something into it. But it's gotta hook up to the other side.
Well, the thing about, he said was, is they put 18-foot naked there in an eight-foot piece or 10, that went somewhere.
Mm-huh, yeah.
So, I mean. Shane, the plumber that was here yesterday that did something, he said he had his mom's restaurant or something was having the same type of problem. And there's something called like a blow tube that you could probably put down into. And what it does is it kinda, I guess, when the water feeds through there, it kinda expands it out and creates a channel and stuff. And maybe it might create a channel over to where it can start draining again. But that's something that you gotta be able to change out every so often and everything else and then put a new blow tube in there whenever that one goes bad.
And it blows out and then where does it go?
Yeah, he says he has to do that about every two or three months. So, I mean, that's something. I mean, I just wanted to bring that up in case that might be an option. I don't know. I just know that they're running underneath the concrete. That drain is specifically running underneath the concrete, so.
You'd have to call the contractor.
Yeah.
You'd have to lay a new drain.
Yeah.
And then it's gotta tie into the septic or the sewer system.
Yeah. Well, it will tie in. When it, that drain drains right into the pit and then the pumping that's in the pit will push it up to the sewer drain and send it out. So we have no problem there. It's just from that eight-foot point of getting it over to the pit.
Could we, yeah, the question would be, could we put it above the, yeah, could we route it above?
Ten inches of cement out before 10-foot and lay a new line and new drains.
Right.
Or if it could be set above it, I don't know.
Above it, yeah.
Kind of like what you temporarily did, but make it a permanent deal somehow. I don't know.
And there's no way to shove new pipe inside the old pipe and make the drain smaller, but still.
That, I didn't really think about that kind of option. That could be an option. I don't know what they can do or what they, all I know is basically what they kinda told me and Tef Plumbing has kinda told me about 18-feet line went in an eight-foot hole and when he pulled it back out, it was full of mud and rock, so, rock pebbles, so I don't know.
Well, you might talk to them and see if that's an option to get a hole, a pipe inside of that pipe or something to fix that.
Okay.
You're gonna have to cut a pretty good hole to get your pipe, to get a good pipe in.
Yeah, eight-foot is, you have to.
Yeah, you're gonna have to have a lot of room out there.
And here's what I saw. From where that drain deal is, you can look down eight to 10 inches and see concrete. But that kinda slants because in the pit, it's about two and a half, three feet lower. So you're gonna go through deeper concrete as you go. So you might be able to get that and then maybe drill through or something and then put a piece of pipe in there, just cut that section out and be able to drill through. I don't know, until you reach the other hole that's already running through there.
Or do it right and jackhammer it out and fix it.
No, not enough room for the boring tool and everything.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So I will get back with them, discuss some options and stuff with that and see what they might be able to come up with and stuff. And once I get that, I will notify Cindy to have it put on agenda.
And that's the only thing that drains in there is the laundry. Nothing else comes in there.
Right, I mean.
No toilets, no.
No, there shouldn't be no toilets and nothing.
No, nothing.
Only reason why those drains are in there, in case a pipe bursts, they can drain into the pit so the pit can pump it out and stuff. And that was, we solved a lot of the water seeping in from the outside of walls and everything else with that other pit being back there and pumping itself out and stuff. We're not getting as much water as we've done over the three years or four years I've been here that we're getting in there and stuff. So we've solved some of the problem. Now, this is a new one. It's just, I took 48 gallons with a shop vac, it pulled out of there and it's still filled up.
Does the, does the hot water tank that serves the washer and dryer, does it drain into there as well? Do we have a single hot water tank that serves?
Yeah, there's, I think there's a 60-gallon hot water tank down in the pump room.
See, it wasn't, at one time Scott was talking about, you know, we closed in that one deal that he was wanting to move the laundry up out of the basement.
Yes, he was.
So I didn't know if that might be something that we'd better look into is moving it, but I don't even know what the water, where it would drain from.
Well, if you went up there, more than likely, you might be able to get it to drain into a line that runs into the sewer system and stuff and not be running down there into the pit like it is now.
Yeah. Well, that would be the option that would be most appealing, would be run it back into the sewer.
Yeah, might be.
So, otherwise, right now, well, I just got it where it's running directly straight into the pit so that whenever they do laundry and it rinses itself out, the water's going straight to the pit and then the pit's pumping it straight to the sewer.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming up here and taking care of that, Scott. We appreciate that very much.
My concern was when I saw as much water was the geothermal pumps itself.
Pumps that broke or something.
So that was my deal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, down to item 10, executive session. Per Title 25, OS 307.2.4.
I would make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay.
I'll second that.
He has a big bag.
At 10, at 10:38, okay. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Boba.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Let's see, and do you have all the paperwork for that?
Well, I have, like, and what all do you?
Oh, well, we'll go into executive session if we need something we can contact. Okay, let's, let's. Put us on executive session.
Cindy sits here and the rest of us open seating. Come on up to the front where we can hear you at least.
Doing good, how you doing? Excuse me, didn't get up. You bet, you bet. How are you doing?
Nice to meet you Randy, Dean Wyatt. Jim Hamlin, Dean Wyatt.
Oh yeah.
When can I come and see you?
I had forgotten about it too, I lost track of time. Okay, we're gonna re-enter.
Yeah, we gotta, we need to re-enter. I'd make a motion to re-enter regular session due to our posting of our agenda with the option to go back into executive session.
I second that.
Been moved into executive all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitts.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
At 11 o'clock. Okay, let's move back up to item I. Discussing phase two and relocation of offices for Amherst Timberland Timberland Construction Group at 11 o'clock. We thank everybody for being here. We know that we kinda sent out feelers and we got feedback from the officers and stuff and now we're into the phase where we're going to try to get moved out and start the construction or stay in and start the construction. There's been some conflicting reports, I guess, as to what our options are. And we were trying to explore moving in buildings temporary, being housed where we're gonna be housed and what we're gonna do. But we appreciate you gentlemen coming up and meeting with us and kinda going over our plans as we wanna get your scope of work and what you expect out of us and we're gonna get from you guys what we need to do, okay?
Real quick, we've got one more coming. He got caught by the train. So, he'll be joining us, that's Larry.
Okay, well, we've had some, this is court day. Our judge and ADA would like to be here. We moved it back from 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock to try to accommodate them and they're still not here. They have a heavy court docket, so little later on would be good for them too, but we'll just kinda skate along here and see how, when people show up, so.
Federal law allows the trains to sit on the track for 15 minutes, so. And there's legislation in Oklahoma right now that's currently being hered to lower to 10 minutes, so we'll see where we are.
Robin, would you like to sing the national anthem for it? No.
Not right now.
Not right now, huh? Oh, I know that I've heard you sing before. You and Penny could probably just pick right up and go with it.
We can do a good harmony, I'm sure.
There you go.
I guess we could cover out where we are in the bid process, though. Does Larry need to be here to cover the bid, where we are in the bid process?
I was just gonna ask if you need a back road.
Of all the trips I've made to Medford, that's the first time I've caught the train. Believe that.
Well, always stop, always stop. We're not in that big a hurry, always stop.
I should probably hear an old lary.
Yeah, if you could sign in before you leave.
Steve, Larry Hen, nice to meet you, sir.
We have drawings in hand now, we're spec groups. We're tentatively planning on advertising next Wednesday. We'll get the ad here for you to approve Monday in the paper. I believe that's what you told me, one this Sunday. They'll have to do on Monday and they'll advertise on Wednesday.
Yeah, it has to be here by noon, I believe, on Monday.
You have to throw a board.
We'll probably go ahead and send it to them, but I think we have to send it to y'all to approve.
You guys want to approve that, correct?
Yeah, on Monday agenda.
Yeah.
But there's no reason for it not to be approved. So, the tentative bid date is?
March 20th.
March 20th, 'cause we have to advertise it for 20 days, 21 more.
Okay.
That's when you'll open the bids, March 20th?
Now, last time we did this, we did not do that on a meeting day. I think we did it on a Thursday and then the following week is what we, so March 25th is what we'd be looking at.
Okay. Oh, the bids are supposed to be back to you by March 20th?
That's when we'll do the bid opening.
Okay, that is the bid opening, okay.
The bids will come here and we'll set a time. And of course, we need county representation here.
Yeah, we'll do like we did last time.
And then that gives us only a couple of days to do what we call bedding the bids. We call the people and make sure that they're good with their numbers and then we put a guaranteed max price together and have it to the commissioner. So, it needs to be on that agenda for time sake, for that on the, I think usually the agenda by Thursday.
Yes, yes.
Okay, let me go into some of the particulars. We don't have really anything that's a critical path in this one compared to what we had on the outside with the windows and the HVAC systems. The only thing that we have this critical path is the firearm system. We have to get that bid out, whoever's low on it, we have to immediately get them under contract 'cause they designed that system. Then they've got to submit it to the state fire marshal. The best I can do in that is a 90-day process. I don't care how hard we push this, it's a 90-day process. So, it, and some of that depends on the state. It's out of my control, but we can push the low bidder to get the design done, but that's normal procedure. Fire splinters and fire alarms is that they do their own design, submit it. We can't put any of that system in until it's approved by the state fire marshal. Of course, we're trying to two phases project, two and three and then one is what we're talking about doing, but.
Two and three? I thought we had phase one and phase two. Where did we get a phase three? What is phase three?
No, no. That's what I said.
Oh, floors, okay. I'm sorry.
We're doing two and three as phase one and the first floor is phase two.
Okay.
But we have some concerns with that. When we do the second floor, that's where the courtroom is and that's where your bathroom is. If you have court and we've got bathrooms tore up, but there's options out there of restrooms that you can lease, because I think the only bathrooms you have are just these in the stairs at that point.
In the stairs.
And these are not handicapped accessible.
They want me to ADA, so.
Anybody in a wheelchair or walker, that's not gonna work.
But you can rent trailers that have ADA access, bathrooms in them, you hook electric to them, they've got heat, they've got air conditioning and you just gotta tie them into the sewer. And I looked at some of those online yesterday. Now, we can put porta-johns out here for you, but usually the public, I mean usually the workers in there don't like that. But I've seen these trailers, we've been on them, had them, were Phillips and people like that, ran them and what they rent for, I don't know because I don't know what you require.
So, Randy, you're saying when you do phase one, the court's still gonna be open?
Well.
That's what I think we need to talk about.
Well, that and the bathroom. I was gonna go to the court. I mean, all we have in the courtroom is the firearm system, isn't that correct?
Unless they take the alternate to redo the ceilings. But that's gonna be based on price.
Yeah, that's two day, yeah, that's two day swapping tile out. So, I mean, there's not, it's not extensive, but it's somewhere.
My thought was only the access through the construction area to the court.
And that's always gonna be an issue.
That's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, that's definitely gonna be an issue. I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible, but we don't know your court schedule. That's where the rub comes in for us, where it's almost impossible for us to bid it. We could build a temporary access plywood and going up the stairs, but golly, we still, you know, have some issues. Is there any possibility of you having court someplace else for 30 days?
Well, originally when we...
Come on up to the front where we can hear you at least.
Doing good, how you doing? Excuse me. Didn't get, didn't get up. You bet, you bet. How are you doing?
Randy Carter. Nice to meet you Randy, Dean Wyatt.
Jim Hamlin.
Dean Wyatt.
Dean, nice to meet you sir.
Oh yeah, yeah, yeah. When can I come and see you?
I had forgotten about it too, I lost track of time. Okay, we're gonna re-enter.
Yeah, we gotta, we need to re-enter. Okay. I'd make a motion to re-enter regular session, uh, due to our posting of our agenda with the option to go back into executive session.
I second that.
Been moved in second at all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitts.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
At eleven o'clock. Okay, let's move back up to item I. Uh, discussion of phase two and relocation of offices for Amara Tech, Potter Construction Group at eleven o'clock. We thank everybody for being here. We know that we, uh, kinda sent out feelers and we got feedback from the officers and stuff and now we're into the phase where we're going to try to get moved out and, and start the construction or stay in and start the construction. There's been some, uh, conflicting reports, I guess, of, as to what our options are. And we were trying to explore, uh, moving in buildings temporary, uh, being housed where we're gonna be housed and what we're gonna do. But, uh, we appreciate you gentlemen coming up, uh, and meeting with us and kinda going over our plans, uh, as we wanna get your scope of work and, and what you expect out of us and, and we're gonna get from you guys what, what we need to do. Okay?
Real quick, we've got one more coming. He got caught by the train.
Oh.
So, um, he'll, he'll be joining us, that's Larry.
Okay, well, we've, we've had some, uh, this is court day. Our judge and ADA would like to be here. Uh, we moved it back from ten o'clock to eleven o'clock to try to accommodate them and they're still not here. They have a heavy court docket, so little later on would be good for them too, but we'll just kinda, uh, skate along here and see how, when people show up, so.
Federal law allows the trains to sit on the track for fifteen minutes, so. And there's legislation in Oklahoma right now that's currently being hered to lower to ten minutes, so we'll see where we are.
Robin, would you like to sing the National Anthem for it? No.
Not right now.
Not right now, huh? Oh, I know that, I've heard you sing before. You and Penny could probably just pick right up and go with it.
We can do a good harmony, I'm sure.
There you go.
I guess we could cover out where we are in the bid process, though.
Yes.
Does Larry need to be here to cover the bid pro, where we are in the bid process? Okay, there you go.
Period.
I was just gonna ask if you need a back road.
Of all the trips I've made to Medford, that's the first time I've caught the train. Believe that.
Well, always stop, always stop. It, we're not in that big a hurry, always stop.
I should probably hear an old Larry.
Yeah, if you could sign in before you leave.
Steve, Larry Hand, nice to meet you sir.
Nice to meet Larry. We have drawings in hand now, we're spec groups. Uh, we're tentatively planning on advertising, uh, next Wednesday. We'll get the ad here for you to approve Monday in the paper. I believe that's what you told me, one of the same week. They'll have to do on Monday and they'll advertise on, on Wednesday.
Yeah, it has to be here by noon, I believe, on Monday.
Yeah, we'll have to, you know, throw a board.
We'll probably go ahead and send it to them, but I think we have to send it to y'all to approve.
You guys want to approve that, correct?
Yeah, on Monday, uh, agenda.
Yeah.
But, uh, there's no reason for it not to be approved. So, the tentative bid date is?
What week?
Uh, March twentieth.
March twentieth, 'cause we have to advertise it for twenty days, twenty-one more minutes.
Okay.
That's when you'll open the bids, March twentieth?
Now, last time we did this, we did not do that on a meeting day. I think we did it on a Thursday and then the following week is what we, so March twenty-fifth is what we'd be looking at.
Okay. Oh, you, the bids are supposed to be back to you by March twentieth?
That's when we'll do the bid opening.
Yeah, that, that.
Okay, that is the bid opening, okay.
Yeah, that will, the bids will come here, and we'll set a time. And of course, we need county representation here.
Yeah, we'll do like we did last time.
And, and then that gives us only a couple of days to do what we call bedding the bids. We call the people and make sure that they're good with their numbers and, and then we put a guaranteed max price together and have it to the commissioner. So, it needs to be on that agenda for time sake, uh, for that on the, I think usually you need to end it by Thursday and.
Yes, yes.
Okay, let, let me go into some of the particulars. We don't have really anything that's a critical path in this one compared to what we had on the outside with the, with the windows and the HBAC systems. The only thing that we have this critical path is the firearm system. We have to get that bid out. Whoever's low on it, we have to immediately get them under contract, 'cause they designed that system. Then they've got to submit it to the state fire marshal. The best I can do in that is a ninety-day process. I don't care how hard we push this. It's a ninety-day process. So, uh, it, uh, and, and some of that depends on the state. Um, it's out of my control, I mean, so, but, uh.
Okay.
But we can push the low bidder to get the design done, uh, but that's, that's normal procedure. Fire splinters and fire alarms is that they, they do their own design, submit it. But we can't put any of that system in until it's approved by the state fire marshal, is what I'm gonna come to. Of course, we're trying to two phases project. Two and three and then one is what we're, what we're talking about doing. But.
Two and three? I thought we had phase one and phase two. Where did we get a phase three? What is phase three?
No, no. That's what I said.
Oh, floors, okay. I'm sorry.
We're doing two and three is phase one and the first floor is phase two. But we have some concerns with that. When we do the second floor, that's where the courtroom is and that's where your bathroom is. If you have court, uh, and we've got bathrooms tore up. But there's options out there of, of restrooms that you can lease, uh, because I think the only bathrooms you have are, are just these in the, in the stairs at that point.
In the stairs and.
Yeah.
And these are not handicapped accessible.
They want, they want me to ADA, so.
Yeah.
Anybody in a wheelchair or walker, that's not gonna work.
No, no.
But you can rent trailers that have ADA access, bathrooms in them, you hook electric to them, they've got heat, they've got air conditioning and you just gotta tie them into the sewer. And I looked at some of those online yesterday. Uh, now, we can put portage on it out here for you, but, um, usually the public, yeah, that's why, I mean, usually the, the workers in there don't, don't like that. But I've seen these trailers, we've been on them, had them, were Phillips and people like that, man them. And what they rent for, I don't know, because I don't know what you require.
So, Randy, you're saying when you do phase one, the court's still gonna be open?
Well.
That's what I think we need to talk about.
Well, that, that and the bathroom. I was gonna go to the court. I mean, all we have in the courtroom is the firearm system, isn't that correct?
Unless they take the alternate to redo the ceilings.
Okay.
But that's gonna be based on price.
Yeah, that's two-day, yeah, that's two-day swapping tile out. So, I mean, there's not, it's not extensive, but.
Right.
But it's some work.
My thought was only the access through the construction area to the court.
And that's always gonna be an issue.
That's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, that, that, that's definitely gonna be an issue. I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible, but we don't know your court schedule. That, that's where the drug comes in for us, where it's almost impossible for us to bid it. We could build a temporary access plywood and going up the stairs, but golly, we, we still, you know, have some, some issues. There is, or any possibility of you having court someplace else for thirty days?
Well, originally, when we, we discussing this, we had talked about moving everybody out.
Why?
Kind of the entire building, because it was gonna save us in the amount of time and the dollar savings that we could move out. It was basically gonna be pretty close to a wash of what it costs us to move out and we'd have it done in a lot shorter time period. We wouldn't have the liability issues of someone getting hurt entering the building or something like that. Um, that, uh, the health issues of every debris, the breathing, that was kind of what we was talking about and, uh, was kind of pretty much, everybody was realizing that was probably was gonna be the best route. But then later it came up that Mr. Hand had spoke to Dina that said that they could stay and that was the first knowledge I had when Dina came to me and said that they were told they could stay. So, that was my first knowledge of it and that, that's then things, so then, then I, I thought, well, maybe I wasn't the contact, because in the meantime, Max and I had switched. I had been chair and, and then he got to be chair, so I thought maybe that in the translation there, even though I'd been the one working and I had Cindy and she didn't know anything about it, so we kinda got, we kinda got thrown under the bus, I think, 'cause we got confused on where we were.
Yeah, I, Dina asked me about it. She said she had talked to you guys about it. Like, somebody in the courtroom or courthouse had talked about it. And I, I never told her she could have it. I said, "Well, that you'd have to talk to you first and then we'd, I'd have talked to my office and see if that's a possibility."
Yeah, Larry don't, Larry don't like those.
I don't like those.
Larry don't like those.
I'm, I'm listening to all the suggestions and then we do what we can and, you know, lot, safety's a live, but that's the biggest thing, I think.
It is.
Uh, entering and exiting the, the building while we've got workers here.
So, is, is moving out all, all at once still an option?
Well, um.
Because we would need to know that.
Yeah, I, I, I know. That's, that was our, our, our deal is, we really hadn't made any certain decisions. We were still looking at options of who was gonna do what and trying to have that round table discussion, but, you know, when we had talked about the cost, we said, health-wise, we were really worried about the health and the security and we thought that, so we started looking around on that, but, uh, I didn't know it was an option really to stay. I, I, I had no idea it could be an option.
With the two, you ended up with the two portable buildings, correct?
Yes, we did.
So, what will that house? Will that house all three floors or not?
No, no, we're going to, we're going to do some, yeah, mo, most of it. Now, we had looked at, uh, I'd talked to Dina about my district shop is here in Medford and I have a separate room there. We had talked about making that into the courtroom. That was a possibility and, uh, trying to, you know, do something else so that, that was a, 'cause she talked about that she could move the, uh, if we had a jury trial, the, the chairs and stuff could be moved out of there and over there if they needed to do that or, or whatever, but, but it had never really, I just didn't know. She's talked to you and you had given her ideas about how you could make it where, that was just accessible to the, to the elevator to go up and just into the courtroom and that you had already worked all that out and figured out where you give it everything, so.
Yeah, Larry don't work those deals out in the bid process. He's not even involved in the bid process. Okay, so, well, I've got to know all that information, so we advertise it, we put it in the bid package, it's exactly how we're phasing this and how, because it's, it's not level playing field unless I can do that. So, we need to reach that agreement, but, uh, I, I don't know, uh, I'd say Larry don't make those decisions. He may be asked about it, he may give an opinion.
Right.
That's up to us to make.
That's what I think it really came down to was that Dina, I wasn't there, but she was talking to you and then she asked.
Among other, I mean, there was several.
Right.
Logistics is a big, big issue.
So, let's talk pros and cons of if, obviously, we can't all stay, but let's talk pros and cons of if, if the courthouse, uh, the courtroom did stay. Um, um, they seem to think that they could house all of their people in the actual courtroom.
Yeah.
Uh, they wouldn't need and obviously leave their computer. That one room would have to be where her server is, would have to be sealed off. I, i, is that a, let's talk pros and cons, is that a possibility to leave just the courtroom? Uh, not, any of the, the bathrooms would go, the, all the other offices would go, it would be just the courtroom and the elevator. Let's talk pros and cons on what that means of leaving it.
You're still gonna be exposed to all the dust.
Okay.
That's probably.
And you're not gonna have a public bathroom for individuals that, I mean, if they're able-bodied, they could come to the first floor and get under the stairs and.
Well, I thought, no, I thought, well, I, I thought the deal was that they, and I'm, my understanding was you could make some kind of a portable deal that just allowed them directly to the elevator and once they got to the next elevator, it would be just to the courtroom, everything else. I don't know if you're building fake walls or what you're doing to seal it all up and keep them up. I mean, I don't know what you're, is that what you was talking about with her, Larry? To make it available?
Do you want me to see a replay?
We've discussed if, if, if this was considered at all, was we'd have to protect whoever's going in and out.
Okay.
Of the courtroom, if you will.
Okay.
'Cause the employees is manageable probably to some degree, but.
Why are they still?
When we start having the public come in, I mean.
Just let Dina know whenever.
If it's a heavy court day or a light, you know, it just, it just varies.
Are you protecting us from the dust or from things falling on our head?
When we use the word dust, I don't anticipate a lot of dust.
You don't?
No, we, we tore the ceilings up. That wasn't too bad.
No?
I've been behind the walls, there's not a lot of dust per se. But there'll be more dust when we go back with the new construction, drywall, you know, at some point we're doing something to the, you know, so.
It's not a, it's a construction site.
The demolition won't be too bad, but the new construction.
We've been sitting in a construction site.
The other question I have that, that Scott Falkenberg brought to us, our maintenance man, he said that the air conditioning units cannot be run during construction because it's a new unit and we didn't wanna suck in all that, the dirt and construction.
We have to be very careful about that.
So, so, so would we be able to, to, obviously, hopefully, we're gonna get this, to this before winter.
Yeah.
I hope we're talking air conditioning over heating. So, are we gonna be able to air condition the building that, for, for the court? If, if they did move, if they did move in there, can we air condition that room? Is that possible? How do you do that?
Well, on construction sites, once we've filed the units, 'cause we have to have the building conditioned to do the finished product, uh, we do, uh, we can actually ask the HBAC contractor to do some extra filtering and, and, or you can have Scott do it, one of the other, but you can run the units. We, we do it on every job. We have to at some point.
We just have to change filter.
We have to have the extra filters and stuff because of the dust and they have to be changed out on a more regular basis, just wanted to.
Additional air scrubbers would be an option too.
Yeah.
Um, that courtroom does have its own unit. It is isolated somewhat, but it does not mean that nothing would migrate or get in there. You know, like, there's no way of guaranteeing that.
Cindy, I have a, a point that you need to kinda look at too. Life safety says you cannot just bring people up and down through an elevator. That means you have to give them another way out, because if for any reason a fire broke up.
They can't use the elevator.
They can't use the elevator.
So, that means that we gotta keep the stairwell open.
And then we have to keep a stairwell open, which creates a lot more difficulties.
Have to put a panic exit device on a, on a temporary enclosure and mark it exit and, and do some of the things that, then, then you'd have to have that from the second floor to the first floor.
It, it, it just complicates things a little more and causes a lot more.
And see, we, we have to consider too that the south or the north exit is not handicap accessible, only the south exit, correct?
Exactly.
We don't have a ramp up here.
Exactly.
So, the far exit, yeah.
Has to be, uh, out, the south door.
Which creates more temporary walls and more.
Yeah.
It's just, it becomes problematic in, in a way. I just wanted to bring that up.
No, that's a good point. Very good point.
And I think is, is Dina's main concern is because they have so many files and so much, that the time that they have to get into so much or what's?
They have six jury trials.
Jury trial.
Right, but they, she was talking about that they could push some of those back.
She thought, she thought, she thought they could do too, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And she was concerned that some of the, uh, younger people that have testified would be more relaxed in this courtroom since they've already appeared for depositions and stuff in that courtroom, so it's somewhat familiar, is what she expressed to me.
And the confidentiality.
Yes, confidentiality.
That was another deal. Did she talk to you about partitioning off that? Because confidentiality is that if she moves all of those offices, she's gonna have all the judges, she's gonna have the DA and she's gonna have all the lawyers in one big room. Did she talk to you about doing something to, I mean, there, there is no confidentiality in one big room.
She mainly just asked you, at first she was asking if the second floor could stay intact. I said, "Well, there's no way. There's absolutely no way." No, not for what we have to do, work scope. And then, then it got down to, well, what if she brought up the jury trials and everything? And that's, that's really all that was discussed, that she was, her biggest concern was, was the amount of, she was, at the time it was four. Remember saying she had four jury trials coming up? And we've been fortunate in the last six months that seems like everything's either been settled or been canceled for whatever reason. Every time we've geared up to meet, you know, to deal with a jury trial, it's been, something's happened, it didn't go through. So, we've been fortunate so far, I guess, in that regard.
And the, how often, um, obviously, they have docket every week, um, and I know that they, they said that you were very congenial working with them, like when they did have docket to have you move to someplace else to help on the noise and stuff, but, you know, i, if you have a jury trial, that's a whole week, is that, you know, you know, if you've got four of them, that'd be four weeks in there that you, they would probably ask you not to be on that floor. I mean, you know, how does that, how does that work into your sched, how do you, how do you schedule that? How do you work into?
I mean, I don't, I don't know how to bid that. I mean, I don't know how to present that, because unless you could give me a firm schedule and say, you know, we gotta be out of these areas, um, May the fifteenth to May the twenty-second and, and you can't do that because of the way the courts move. I mean, they just, uh, they're, they're, they don't know when jury trial's gonna happen. It may not happen, I mean, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah, one's been.
I'm asking you to give me something impossible that you can't give me and, and I can't bid it, 'cause I can't give that information to the subcontractors and everything, so, uh, so, uh, maybe I was a little premature or maybe the best I can do is move out of the building. I mean, that, that, I, I just don't see any way that we can, can, I can present a decent bid package or be all in agreeance with that.
Yes.
Uh, because I still gotta comply with all the competitive bid laws and I, I, and I, and I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be in the fight, which is, is big enough for me, of saying, "Well, you didn't tell me that I had to pay off the second floor for four weeks. You owe me another two thousand dollars and then I got twenty-five subs and they get wind of it and hear the, the flood come, the people wanting extra money and, and I'm back here fighting with them and fighting with the architect and fighting with the owner and saying, "Well, I didn't tell them this and, you know, I'm supposed to be building the building, not fighting with them about money." So, uh, you know, and, and that's always an issue for us. We're, we're responsible to you for money, but if I don't have a good bid package and I don't have the information and, um, I'm, um.
Well, it'll cost you in the long run if you don't have a good bid package.
Yeah, that's right. We've gotta have.
I always do, always throw money at it then.
Yeah, and, and, and some subs won't bid because of it. If, if you just put a generic situation and it's hard enough to get bid out here without making it difficult for them. And then the ones that do bid and, and we, you know, electrical and plumbing, mechanical, some of those people.
Yeah.
When they call their suppliers and they figure out nobody else is getting quotes from them and they're the only ones, then my budget just goes to the roof. I mean, I've had that happen to me and I've gotta reject the bid, re-advertise and re-bid and it just becomes a, a drawn-up process. So, we need to make the bid package as clean as we can and, but again, you're our customer. We want to do what's best for you and at this point, I'm not sure that it invests that we research moving out of the building.
Everybody moving out.
Yeah, and I, and I hate to ask you to do that. I know what an inconvenience that is for you. And I can't imagine you're not still gonna have to be in the building some, because you're probably not gonna move all your records.
No, we talked about that.
We had already talked about that. We understood we'd have to come in with hard hats and, you know, the, the vest and all that and, and, but we could, you know, have access, you know, after hours or even during hours if, if we needed to. We thought that, not, not on a daily basis, but, you know, maybe once a week or something. We're trying to get all of our records digitalized. One other thought though, i, if we didn't move out of the building or if the courtroom didn't move out of the middle, liability, where does the liability stay, lay that if someone comes in and, and falls over construction, you know, in the building, is that come back on Grant County or does that come back on, on the, on the construction? And I know if you do.
It'll come back on both.
Okay, I, you know, obviously, it's gonna have who has the pocketbook.
You know, that's the way it works.
Yeah, so.
They'll show everybody and their brother.
Yeah.
So.
So, um.
I mean, even these, even with them putting up temporary walls and all that, there's gonna be one person who's going to get around that temporary and be in an area they're not supposed to be in. That's a liability that I'm not sure I would wanna take.
The other issue we were, we had discussed was the, obviously, one of the reasons we're redoing everything is because of our electrical issues. We've got electrical tied into every floor, into every room, into different breaker boxes. Um, we didn't know if that courtroom was even isolated for electricity by, if it was con, within its, contained within itself, you know, as you're pulling wires out and putting new wire out, is that gonna, in the middle of a jury trial, you yank, start yanking wires out and all of a sudden they have no electricity, then, you know, where are we? I mean, 'cause we, do we know where the wiring even is?
The electrician, our contractor would have, he's, he would have the best, uh, uh, knowledge of that.
The current guy.
Yeah.
No guarantee he's gonna get second bid.
Right, exactly. The, the, our contractor in phase one that did all the ceiling work, overhead work.
You got it, yeah. So, I know that that's part of our issue. So, your recommendation to the board is?
If there's a way for you to move out of the building, I think it's in your best I think that allows the contractors to work more efficiently and faster and you will immediately eliminate a lot of the liabilities or possible liabilities. Your life safety obviously is gonna be much better, because you're not gonna have to worry about getting them out in case there is a fire or a problem, smoke, whatever.
And could people come back on us later and say they had health issues from breathing in things that's in the air during construction?
You know people. I mean, of course, there's gonna be somebody who doesn't like, even now, drywall dust or somebody's putting a stain down and even though it's low VOCs, they're still gonna say, "Oh, it's making me sick, I gotta go home today." It happens all the time.
Well, and, and, but before we make this decision, let's, if I could, let's go one step further. If we meet the commissioners on three twenty-five and submit the bids to them, when are you thinking of actually starting?
Yeah.
Cause we can, we can play with the start date with court dates.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, to, to a point.
I, I normally rule farmers on thirty days contracting, some metal approval. Now, we, we always tell people, "Well, we can come in and start demo," which there's no reason to start demo and move you out if I, if I'm not ready for, for the next five.
See, this all ties into your bid package, is what I'm, I'm trying to get at, is, you Is, you know, if we start on 3/25, a month from that's 4/25, that's... That's same same May 1st.
May 1st.
What does that do to the court schedule? I mean, are the jury trials in April or are they in May?
There's a real big one, and a very sensitive one, that's the last week of April.
See, with that, we could alleviate that by not starting till May 1st.
Or May 15th, till last... I mean, you know, obviously, we'll have the jury trial, and then they're gonna be consumed with all that. Then we gotta pack up and move. So, you know, I wouldn't wanna... I wouldn't wanna run it quite that close, that quite that tight, you know? And I know we talked about trying to get in by Labor Day because I said, "Just because of winter," and I realized that that's gonna push back, you know? We pushed the start date back. We obviously pushed the end date back.
Well, and we feel... And let me ask these two guys because, you know, I bid contracting, and then it kinda goes to these guys to handle from that point on. I'm still involved in much... I think if we completely move out of the building, it's a five-month project at that point.
Yeah, there was discussion of four, but that's too tight.
Originally, we had been phasing it in three phases every eight months. I think we can roll back to five months on the schedule. But if we start May 15th, it's just...
Yeah, okay.
June, July, August, September, October 15th, so...
So, you'd still be in before dead of winter?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be a goal because it... The process of moving back in is difficult in bad weather.
Absolutely.
And, go ahead.
Well, there's discussion on second and third floor first?
Do what now?
Second and third floor construction first.
Well, we're talking about them leaving the building. Everybody moves out, and we have the whole building. So, when we go in, we're gonna demo the whole building and get going.
Well, and the other thing that we needed to discuss was parking. In the past, you've used our parking lot, which is not a problem at all. And especially if we did do that, we'd have to use the south door because of the handicap, so, you know, our parking would be all that way. Probably wouldn't have much construction in the front part of the building. I'd... No, it'll probably be in the back, right?
Can't say.
I mean...
We have a problem now bringing material in. With the new vestibule that's installed, we have trouble getting material in. We're gonna have to bring a lot of material, drywall and so forth, through the south door.
But I don't... I think you're not gonna store anything on that side, I wouldn't think.
No, no.
Okay, but then again, if you're bringing in your materials, we can't have you bringing your materials while we're allowing people in and out of the doorways, the facility. So, basically, if we kept the court open the day of court docket, we'd have to basically shut down the construction because you couldn't bring anything in through the door, pretty much.
Well, yeah, to some degree. Big items is what I'm getting at. Drywall. With the new... With the side doors on the vestibule, it just limits us. Without tearing a thing up, beating it all to heck, it kinda limits us to what we can bring in and out of there, material-wise.
And the reason we wanted to start, we kinda... Our original plan was to start on the third floor, the second floor, and then the first because as you're bringing all the material in, obviously, we don't want our floors and our walls all dinged up.
Yeah, that's kinda how we approached phase one.
So, we wanted to start at the third floor, second floor, first floor.
Yeah, we'd demo for coming down and start with go back going, coming down.
Okay.
There'll probably be some phasing in that. But as far as not bringing materials in the south on court days, I don't see why we can't schedule in court days.
Yeah, we could schedule around that.
That's not gonna be an issue for us. But again, we're talking about... When we talk about moving out of the building, but we're still talking about maintaining the courtroom people in the court.
We're still looking... We're trying to get... We're trying to gather all the information to make a good decision for the health and safety of not just our employees, but of the public.
It still don't... I still gotta bring the public in. I still gotta do all the temporary. I still gotta do all the temporary.
If anybody is in this building, then you have to do all the temporary walls and all that.
I have one more scenario or one more suggestion. It is possible we do it all the time. We have done it before. It's... Would it be possible? We've got the double doors going into the courtroom from the second floor, okay? If that was the only access, that's for Dina, that's for whoever's working up there. Again, some type of partition wall, covered, go straight into those double doors. You cannot exit it. You can't go anywhere else. Take it down one flight of stairs. Leave that... We have some work on the cap to do and on the walls. Leave that, do everything, and then move it over to the other side and complete that side. It could be bid that way, is what I'm saying.
Still got ADA problems.
Well, you could... You don't have... You don't need ADA access for the most part. Every once in a while, you're gonna need it. You could use the elevator, and that person could be escorted. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm just... I understand the court is a big deal. The court docket is a big deal.
We don't start till May 15th. Don't we alleviate a lot of that court?
I don't know.
That would be Dina's.
That's Zenas calls.
In total enclosure, somebody... Go ahead. No, you go ahead. No, please, finish.
Like today, the court docket, Judge Hammondry has a docket. It's once a month. It's not weekly. And like today, there's probably 85 defendants that are on the court docket, and that's one day a month.
Where are they gonna sit?
Judge Woodburn has a docket which is much smaller, once a month on a Monday.
Where are they gonna sit? Where are they gonna wait with they've only can get into the courtroom, and all those people have all their offices in there? Where are they gonna... Where are those 85 people gonna sit?
Well, there will still be enough room to sit.
With all their... They're gonna move all their offices into the courtroom.
About all their stuff.
Yeah, they are.
And they were planning on being here, but with 80-some people, it's gonna get done in an hour.
Well, maybe it is just...
Definitely off until they come here.
Difficult.
Well, this was another fact-finding gathering.
That's what we're all here for, is to gather facts.
And your recommendation.
Your recommendation, see price-wise what we think's gonna happen, how much that's gonna escalate things, and safety, that's our main thing.
And I gotta... I have to point this out, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong. Randy needs to know what the decision is on the court before he bid, before he goes to bid.
Before, I may not be able to advertise the court because, you know, we've got to have... I mean, we're always doing addendum, but I just don't like... Again, you come out with addendums late. You need to understand, in my world, a subcontractor looks and says, "Oh, my, look at this poor dog." And they just do that. You know, they're saying, "Well, we have to drive 100 miles to get there anyway. Now, we got this," and everything. I mean, it's just, I can't regulate that. So, we need to be as defined as we possibly can.
Well, and it's our opinion, and it's our opinion only. And Ryan and I talked about this the other day. We have to take the realities of the fact of your location into account when we go try to get bidders. And we have to make it as simple as possible.
Yeah, yeah.
No dual mobilizations, and that's just our opinion. Because we struggle getting them up here. I mean, we really do. I mean, it's their struggle, but it's still a struggle.
Well, there always ends up that it costs more money. I mean, always.
And again, that's just... We don't run the courthouse. We don't know all the things that go behind that. We're just giving you our opinions.
Yes.
You make it easier for us, which makes it easier for the subs. That's the bottom line.
Which gets you better prices, but it also causes you a lot of inconvenience and can cost you money. So, I don't know the rental or what kind of buildings. I can't imagine there's a lot of buildings out here that's available.
Well, we bought two buildings to house part of our people in.
Okay. Those are the ones you bid on, Park City Schools? Okay, good deal.
From day one, the court, if it had to move, was one of my biggest question marks. Where would the court... I mean, is there options to take the court elsewhere?
I had talked to Dina about moving it possibly to my shop. I've got a... My shop was an old...
Ford dealership.
Ford dealership, and then they had built a Napa store on to it, next to it, and it's a separate part, separate entry doors and stuff. And we had talked about that could be a possibility of something because we have plenty of parking around there. You know, we haven't looked... There's buildings downtown in Medford here. We've looked at the... We've got a brand-new expo building in Pond Creek. Very nice facility, but it's been rented out for most of that time. We believe we can probably move our OSU extension into that office. That'll move one office there. So, we've got some different options, but... So, but that was... That was the original kind of what we were thinking. We've just never made the final decision, trying to see what the options were, you know? Kinda thought, maybe we get down to what we were doing and the cost. And I talked to Becca, kinda throwing some numbers around, and we kinda decided, you know, it'll be five or six months compared to a year if we stayed part of the state here. It would probably expand it out to a year. The health issue of all the dirt and everything. And we thought that... The life safety and the cost, if we could... You know, like you said, your subs wanna come in and, you know... Electricians wanna come in and do all their electrical work. They don't wanna do this room and then come back next room and do that room, and then come back next week and do that floor when they're here. They wanna do it all. So, it... So, we talked about the cost savings and what we could save on the bid as to what it was gonna cost for us to move out, and it was about the same. So, we thought for the health and the safety, and, you know, we just thought it was healthier. So, that was part of our thought process on that. But again, we had never, you know, we'd never made the final decision. We wanted to hear from... We couldn't present it to our officers till we knew all the details.
Right.
You know, so we were trying to gather information. Till you got information to present, you can sit here and think about it all day.
Well, I don't wanna... I mean, our preference, and the architect's preference would be you move out of the building, let us remodel it, and get it done in five months. Now, that being said, I don't know what that costs you. I don't know how that impacts you. I mean, so I don't wanna create an obstacle here for you that's impossible for you to. So, I think that that would be our preference is that... Court, I mean, I'm concerned about... Not concerned about the employees in the building, as I am the public. Because when you have courts, you will have people here that's unhappy to be here in the first place. So, if I need any reason, you know, to make it more miserable for Grant County, they would probably do that. So, anyway, if that's a possibility, I mean, I would really like to... For y'all to tell me that, because I gotta know that before the bid. So, I don't know how long it's gonna take you to look, another week?
Yeah, I'd say we need to... We definitely need to get with Dina and the judge and to, you know, go over this information with them and allow some time for some more thought process on that. But I'd say probably another week.
And the other thing I thought out there is if you stay partially in the building, I'm gonna ask quite a bit of expensive job, temporary enclosures, all the things that happen, putting it in my bid package. So, it'll probably save you some money if we just have the building and, you know, with...
Yeah, we talked about all of those extra costs by staying. And, you know, like I said, if it was just the money, the money is a wash. What we're going to save by you guys being able to bid it in five months and what it's gonna cost us to move out is the same as if we would stay here and we just had the problems with it. But what it comes down to is the health and the safety. You know, we can't always put a price tag on someone's life. One person falls down the stairs and becomes paralyzed or has a very serious injury, wouldn't we all wish we'd have moved out?
Or even if they just fell and decided, "Oh, let's have the lawsuits because now I got several people to go after instead of just one." You know, you could be tied up in a long time just with litigation.
And the other thing we have not done and we needed to do is we needed to contact our own insurance, ACO, to make sure that they would continue to insure us if we did that.
On your remote site.
Yeah, what our liability... What our insurance is. Well, staying in here, what is, you know, if they would continue to allow us to do that even. So, we've just... We're still on fact findings.
Well, if you take another week, let's go through the dates again. That would put your bid date off till June, or excuse me, till March 6th.
Well, we're still talking about April 15th. And we really need to get with Dina on that because on that date, you know? May 15th, I meant.
Oh, no, no, no. I was just... I understand that. I was just talking...
Yeah, you just cut our date off a week.
A week.
What was your original bid date line?
2/27. So, if you put it off...
That's our original add date, yeah.
Right, so you put it off, that's 3/6 with a bid date of March 27th, and then a commissioner's meeting the next Monday of April 1st. So, you still... We'd still have 45 days to get to May 15th. And then somewhere between March 6th and March 27th, I assume you'd wanna have a non-mandatory bid meeting so people could come, your bidders could come look, and we'd be there as well.
We'll do that as a following way.
Get those other buildings over here.
But that still would allow us to start May 15th.
Yeah.
Which means what date do they need to be vacated then? If that's the case.
I'd say about the 27th. They give you a week to get your bid package ready?
No, no.
February 27th to mobilize.
February. I was gonna say that ain't gonna happen.
I quit. I quit now.
Get the calendar up.
Now, what time? If you wanted contractors to come in and start working on the 15th, what... We would need to be out by that, what day is May 15th.
Is that a Wednesday?
Wednesday or whatever. So, we'd need to be out by the 10th or something, like May 10th.
By the end of the week.
Yeah, the 10th.
The 10th is in the middle of the week.
Yeah.
So, May 10th?
Yeah, May 10th.
May 10th, and that gives you for your court, and then that gives you a week and a half or so to read up on it.
Okay, so, May 10th.
But...
We... This is all... This is all... We've still got to talk to Dina and the judge.
I know. I just... I'm wanting to put some dates in there so that people put it in their head.
Yeah.
This is... You know, because you're gonna start taking personal stuff home now.
Yeah.
You know, I would tell them...
Get as much out of here as you can.
If your plan is to advertise on March 6th, when do you need their decision? So, you can have all your bid packages ready. That's what I was getting at.
Say, if we advertise on March 6th, our bids will come in on...
But you need to know how to bid it. You need to know whether we're bidding with partial, the courthouse hanging in, or if we're completely...
You need to know what their decision is.
Yeah, to get your... Yeah, to put your bid... Because you're gonna change your bid packet if we decide that we're gonna stay. You've gotta put in all the temporary costs and all of that stuff. You're not gonna do that in a day.
No. I'd say the week before, the 27th.
So, the 27th of...
March 20th?
No, February 20th. So, we meet on February 25th, or so you'd need it by the 27th. You'd need a decision by February 27th.
Now, do you...
That was a good question.
Is that not doable?
No, I'm wondering if it's doable for you.
I don't know. But the 20... Well, we have the ability to have special meetings and, you know, Max can obviously go talk to Dina and the judge and gather information, so... But we've got... Today is the 19th, and next Monday is the 25th. We can even have a meeting on the 27th if we need to, to, you know, have another group officers meeting on the 25th and then have a special meeting or something on the 27th is doable, maybe.
Yeah, our bid package just becomes much simpler if you completely move out of the building. If you decide you can't move out of the building, you're probably gonna have to move this bid date.
Okay.
Or you could do it on...
What, yeah.
If you couldn't do it on the 6th, if they stay in?
If they stay in.
If we stay in, you won't... Yeah, even if we told you what we're gonna do on the 26th, if we decide to stay in, you're not gonna have it ready on the 6th because you have all the different...
Yeah, because it might draw a bid package, it'd be much more difficult.
Yeah, gotcha.
Do you only advertise on Wednesday here? I don't know.
Yes.
Weekly paper. One weekly paper.
Yeah, I have to tell them Monday, and they'll advertise.
Yeah, that only gives you two days then to get it ready.
Yeah, that would...
And the correctioners have to approve our advertising.
Yeah, so we wouldn't even be able to prove your... At the earliest, would be the earliest... Earliest would be March 4th to approve your advertising. That's the earliest we could even do it.
Make the decision 27th or 25th, and then advertise, yeah, 4th.
So, if we need to come back for another special meeting or whatever obstacles you come up with, if we need any assistance, I don't do that. But it's just tough.
We can also put you on a conference call if we need to.
We'll talk about inconvenience in the courthouse for... In the bid process and everything for six or seven months, and then you're here forever. So, you're gonna need to try to look at the policy, and it's gonna be nice selling.
I wonder where the court's at now. I wonder where they're at, if they're about...
I had called up, and I told Adrian to ask Dina as soon as she could to come down.
Okay.
Apparently, they were still in court when I buzzed up there.
Well, you guys, I know any of the other officers wanna say anything?
I think I understand about the... We're excited. I mean, obviously, the outside of the courthouse is fantastic. And... And we all are proud of our house. But I think when it boils down to money, we need to decide whether it's going to be more advantageous to live in trailers for six months, or if we can stay here and save money by doing that. I don't know about the air quality. We've had some issues with air quality before, but I'm telling you, his men kept things.
And we can't quantify that money unless we bid it both ways, which we don't want to do.
Well, we don't even know, we don't even know what the options are.
But you'll get better bids. Correct me if I'm wrong, your bids will be lower if we can do it all at once.
Yeah, I'll get better pricing and more pricing probably.
More options.
Yeah, instead of having one sub contract for bed, I might have two or three.
That's great. We haven't heard the options of what is going to cost us to move out and set up. That's what we haven't heard.
And we don't know that.
I know it's a wash.
I can't, I can't.
I know that's a wash.
Well, let me tell this little story that just happened to us. We're redoing bathrooms in the Ponkin Theater.
Oh, yeah.
And we demoed out the old bathrooms and they was mold. And one of their employees, the Ponkin Theater employees is suing the theater over being allergic to mold now. Not us.
Did everybody hear that?
Yeah.
That's good information.
We're doing a little hundred thousand dollar bathroom renovation for Ponkin Theater in Park City. And there's, well, actually it's the radio station employee that they rent the space.
In the same building?
Yeah, we tore up the old bathrooms and it just stayed up with mold. She sued the Ponkin Theater for mold-related.
That she did know was there earlier.
Yeah, right. Now, it's not a lawsuit to us, it's on the Ponkin Theater. So I'm not saying, but we're going to expose some of it.
What happens when you take this panel down?
Oh, no, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not trying to be scared tactic.
Yeah, I got you.
But it's just.
But it's information we need to make a, that's why I say pros and cons. We need to know all of it. We, you've got to have all the information, as much as we can gather to make an educated.
We don't worry about it.
I've been a farmer, you know, I can't hear out of one of my ears, you know, so.
So that would be our preference, but whether you can do that or not, I don't know.
Okay, well, we need to have more discussion, I guess, and figure out, you know, I mean, I personally like the idea of staying, but I lean towards, let's get out of here because of the obstacles it brings up and the environment that we're going to be in and the speed of getting the project done.
And the liability of not.
Liability of our insurance.
Liability of not.
Yeah.
So, which begs the question, and I'd be remiss if I didn't, what can we do to help you move? If you go that route? I mean, is there anything we can do, or? I'm just, if there is, you just have to let us know.
Okay.
I don't know what it would be, I'm just saying we're available.
How big is your house?
It's too far away.
I got room for one person, let's not exaggerate, one person. The road to the court, that move is a tough one for you.
Well, I think that's the only, that's the only one we're looking at of leaving. The other ones were all moving.
Deana, this is Deana, our court clerk. You're good. Well, we've been discussing the court and everything to get you caught up on what's.
I'm sure they can find them for the.
Okay. Thank you. The judge, is Stephen coming?
Stephen's not, I mean, we're just super busy, so.
Okay, okay. Well, to get you all caught up, we've talked about the moving out or the staying in. And in their recommendation that we'd be a lot better served if we moved out, everybody moved out. We've been discussing your court docket. Scott provided us some information about kind of temporary trials and what you guys had going on and the do's and the don'ts about the goods and the bads, or whatever you want to say, of staying in versus moving out. Their opinion is, is that if we moved out, it would be faster, it'd be safer, less liability. If we stayed in, we talked about the ability to get to the courtroom and get out of the courtroom and the liability that that's going to allow. We have to have two exits. We can't just rely on the elevator to get up to the next floor. We have to use, we have to have an alternative exit, another way, stairs or two ways in and out. Talked about what that was going to cost, we don't know. Nobody can bid, but they have to know before they go out for bids on the bid packet what we're talking about doing. If you can.
What's your, jury trials, can you kind of tell us what you've got coming up?
We did have one go off today.
April 1st, but we have a week-long one in April. We have two weeks in May and one in July. You're probably going to say one next month, yeah.
The two weeks, the two weeks, the one week in April, is that the, in last week of April, is that the last? Okay, and the two weeks in May, what, do you know what weeks those are?
Yeah, it would be the one or two, the last, it's the last weekend, May.
Last weekend?
One and two, yeah, the last two weeks in May, can't remember exactly.
Okay.
The 20th is a Monday, so, May 28th.
May 28th.
Subject to change.
Yeah.
I mean, they're subject to change those dates too, aren't they?
No, these are not.
Only if they get settled out of court, I mean, yeah.
These are going.
Okay, they will go, okay, okay.
Okay. So if, okay, so if we were originally thinking May 15th, if we moved it to June 3rd or something like that, that might be a doable deal?
And we're still faced with one in July?
Yes.
But that one, we might have to.
Then you're only dealing with one.
Yeah, one, if we had, if we had to, we'd only be dealing with one if we had to find another. Yeah, right.
My question is, where are you going to put a hundred people? Where are we going to go?
Well, we talked about my office, my shop.
Place for a hundred people to have court?
That whole back room is probably as big as your courtroom.
And where are we going to be?
Well, we're going to probably, maybe, we don't know, Deana, that, we're still gathering information. We might have to put you a port, one of those portable buildings, might be across the street if we move them over to the, that, that, not backs, eighty-one feet.
Eighty-one feet.
Yeah, or something, we've got a couple, we're still trying to figure all that out, so. Like I said, we're still trying to get, till we could figure out what we're doing and what our options were. Everything you have to gather, all the pieces, we're finally getting all the pieces put together, so.
This court in July, is it a one-week, two-week deal?
One week. It could possibly go two because there's two cases, we have them stacked. So one would go one, no, that's, that's the one in May. There's two, so we could possibly do the end of May and turn that around and do the next week. Because we have two stacked.
And the other option is July, that far out, I don't know what the, the fairgrounds has, you know. I know early this, they've got the stock shows, but if they kind of knew that, we might be able to reserve the fairgrounds.
Cassie, can you get us a list of that, please?
You know, what, do you know what's booked and what isn't for your jury trial? Just your regular docket, you know, isn't, isn't that.
Well, we had sixty-five people today, okay? My thing is, if we have to have a jury someplace else, are you guys going to pay for the difference that I have to pay?
Well, not if we can put it here in Metford, we don't know.
You just said, you mentioned that.
Yeah, we, I'm just, there's options, we don't know yet, we're still looking. The other thing is, are you going to be able to, if we kept the courtroom open and you're talking about these hundred people and you're going to move all your offices in there, you're going to have all your offices in there and then your hundred people too?
Well, we can, we've got it, we can make it work, we can.
I think your courtroom is about the same size of my, if it works up there, it could probably work in that old Napa building, because I think it's bigger than your courtroom. So that might, if you can do that up there, you might be able to do it all there.
Well, we just have, I mean, we're, yeah, maybe we just move some stuff around, we were going to do some other things.
We also have to, when we do a jury, do we also have to have a separate room for the jurors to meet in?
I do have that, I have a break room that, it would be, it's separate and it can be, yeah, it's a separate room.
Soundproof?
No, I don't think this room is either.
I know, but I mean.
Yeah, no, we would, we would do whatever we needed to, to come, if that's, if that's what we do. We haven't made that decision, but we would accommodate.
Well, my worry is that not every, if you put us in a building with other people, not everything we do is public record.
I think we understand, Deana, you probably need a separate facility from, you probably don't need to go into the two buildings. We understand that, that that's, that's not a, no, we understand that, that, we understand that, so.
Well, if you go into June, that'll help tremendously. We had heard rumors about April 1st or May 1st, something like.
We were, we were shooting from, we were, but we were looking at your dockets and so that's what we wanted to get your docket information, if we could do it June 1st.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it, you know, I know you've got, there's premise liability concerns, but we've also got to be concerned about if we breach confidentiality, that's a potential misdemeanor. And so I understand the premises liability, but we got a lot more work out than that. And that kind of exposing everybody, the DA, me, the court, everybody to that concern is another reason why we were trying not to have to move out, so we have something separate. And I said, if we didn't have, if work was going to be done in the courtroom, it wouldn't even be an option to discuss about us staying and using that. But that was our biggest concern. If we've got some lead in time, I mean, we don't want to be unreasonable about it, but we have a lot of logistics problems if it just, if the timeline gets too quick. Because we have to have time to move the dockets. We have a hard time, people getting here on a normal, you know, we might well just have to suspend an bench warrants for ninety days because, well, I came up to courthouse, nobody was there. And so we'll just probably have to do that. We could even skip a docket if we had to. We did that in January, we'll always have to pay for that the next month, but we can do that. But we'll need to have sufficient space. I said, if you go to June 15th, we can probably, if we've got a place to go, we can probably make that work. But anything, anything quicker than that's going to be a real problem for us because we've got to have, chance to have people here and get the notice of the next place and time.
And we need, and we need to know the date and where we're going as soon as you can get that to us because I've got to contact my IT people, make sure the circuits get moved so that our computers will work at the new location.
And we've got the same issue.
Everybody, everybody.
June 15th is your date though, that's your court. So actually they would need time to still move out before we're talking July 1st.
No. No, well, I was wondering if, could we, June 10th is on a Monday, so if we, if we could move, you know, let them have it by June 10th, I mean, that's five days, would that make a big difference?
Five days to move out?
No, 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 if we moved it, you said June 15th, we were talking about maybe June 15th. I said, maybe could we do it June 10th because 10th is on a Monday and we'd be gone.
Yeah, whatever.
I mean, we appreciate, we appreciate your willingness to look at that and.
Yeah, we have dockets all that week.
Same old bid set.
June 10th.
Well, you could if you advertise it, that's going to cost two.
June would be the, below than 18th for us.
Judge Woodward, the 10th.
Yeah, if we're going to move out then, we could just, when we do May, we could just skip June for mine and then we can go back in July, start again in July. I said, if we've got some time leading, we just can't do it overnight. We've got some leading.
I think that's, we're not having a docket in May.
That's right, that's right, too.
My other question is, can, would we have access to the courthouse once we leave?
Yes, yes, yeah, you just got to wear hard hats when you come in.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Because we're trying to figure out what, because I mean, I think some of our stuff we can actually get into the courtroom. It's like a media, so we don't have to move the files that we don't use.
Okay, yeah.
Can we not do that?
Yes, that would be.
Yeah, that'd make it a lot easier.
Yeah, 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 we had already, we had already, everybody's going to have access. They just got to have their protective gear on and stuff, so, anyway, but we'll look, but we, we've, we realize you need separate facilities, so.
Okay.
Just fix it, goddamn it.
Yeah.
And the timeframe of this being out is still what?
It's going to be five, five months, five to six months, so.
Five to six months.
We were, that was one reason, we was trying to get in before winter set in, but, you know, obviously your docket, we need to definitely take that in consideration, so.
We will put in a request with Mother Nature to hold off.
Oh, that'd be great, I like it.
The move date to move back to the courthouse, there'll be eyes on the road.
I think you're probably right. You're probably right, so.
Well, if there's anything we can do further, just send us email, send them the email, we'll hang at the.
Do you know any good moving companies that would give us a really good price?
I did talk to one out of Enid initially, and I can pass that information along to you.
Would you pass it on to Cindy? Because obviously I don't think our district road hand's going to be able to move in the short period of time that we're talking now to move everything, yeah. And I, you know, and then what happens if one of our guys goes down in the back and then we have a worker's comp deal? I think we're better off to hire that down.
Yeah, I think you're better off hiring that out. And he had, he was looking at bringing a truck and, you know.
Certain amount of people and they quoted just so much of a value or something.
Yeah, I'd have to dig that back out, but I do have.
I said, we figured it, what type of week or what, this is how we was looking at it.
Okay, that'd be good.
I understand too, that does not include IT.
Right, no, 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 we're, no, no, we're IT, we're, no, no. We've got our own IT contractors that, they've already, has already been talked to about.
I just know that movers never want to touch ITs or personal belongings, so.
I mean, I think we're going to take as less as we can and make it work, so we don't have to move everything.
We might have, and we have them in April, just skip those and go to July. July would be preferable, but we may just have to do that. I'm going to, I don't have a good excuse, but I'm going to be on vacation the last week, so we had to.
I vote we move the courthouse.
Well, what if you get called up for jury duties?
I'm exempt. And I need it, I'm getting busted.
You better go.
Yeah, I think we could probably make that, I said, we just got some.
We're trying to avoid some court dockets now, or some jury trials, right? So we're looking at.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's right.
Right now, ten.
Yeah, well, yeah, like, no, like June, we'd be out like the 7th of June and you guys could be in the 10th. That's what we're looking at.
Is that what you're asking, Randy?
I'm sorry.
Well. Yeah, I just want, once we get the dates, that all of this is definitely going to happen, everybody happy with that. I think that all three parties, there should be an email sent out by someone that recaps its dates so that everybody's on the same page and we can send it out to you and to everybody concerned, so everybody's on the same page. The dates have changed tremendously in this meeting.
Yeah, that's why we're having it, that's why, that's why we're here. Because we, it's a moving, it's a moving part and we've still got to figure a lot of things out.
Moving target, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Did we establish a date, you were going to make your decisions by, the county make decisions by?
We were going to try to make our decisions by February 25th, but, but since we're probably moving out later, but, I mean, I guess we, I don't know why there'd be a reason to put it off any longer.
I have no reason to put it off.
We have no reason to put it off.
Yeah, together. Yeah, we need to go ahead and get everything moved in, get the buildings moved and find out where everybody's going to move to, if, if everybody moves out, where they're going to move to.
If the start date's live, that's still like get a bid, because that's to work on the fire alarm system, getting it to the state fire marshal, it's all the semeluses, all color reflections, stuff like that.
Is there a problem with your bid, I heard some conversation about bidding too early, it might be a problem, so, you know, if we, if you go holding bids, okay, holding bids, you have to be awarded, but in that, can you say, do, I, I'll go talk to you about road projects, we can put a start date in them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put a start date in this and that locks them in.
Okay, got you, so you can do that without any problem and it all?
Usually what they do is they, they only guarantee their bid for 30 days, but in 30 days, we've approved this, we've sent them a contract and, and the start date and everything will be in our construction manager's bid package, so.
So it's, it's, okay, it's doable, okay, so that would...
That's good.
Yeah, okay.
And we appreciate you guys making that, that work out. That'd be good for us.
Because they're far out, we can do it.
Yeah, we can move, but we just got to have some time to, to notify all, all the people.
Yeah.
But we can do that.
Because, yeah.
We can skip many...
We have margin to move everything.
We had a, I had a jury trial in January, it was supposed to go a week, it went off, I mean, like, the last minute. And then Mr. Young was having some health issues, our core appointed counsel was, was gone, and so we just struck in, and we really paid for it last week. And, you know, just, that's just missing one, one, I mean, it just snowballs.
Yeah.
But we'll just deal with it. I think, I said, if, and if we know in April, it won't snowball as bad.
Okay.
It's still, it won't be easy, we can make it work. Like I said, if it's going to be earlier than May, then it's just going to be a struggle for us.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yes.
Yeah, if we've got time to do it, we, we've got a lot of flexibility, but, okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you all, we appreciate it very much.
All right, all right.
Okay, that cleared it, Mike.
You know where to find us, if you need anything, so.
Okay. We'll put it back on our agenda.
Monday, yep, that sounds good. Thank you very much.
Do you need us here Monday then?
I don't think so.
No, if we need you, can we conference call you, if we need you?
Sure, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Cindy, make sure Cindy has all your phone contacts.
I know how to get ahold of each and every one of you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
We need to go back into executive session.
Yeah, Stephen? You guys, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
For coming.
Y'all have a good day. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Becca.
Yep, I'm sorry, I'll get out of your way.
Looks like a Ryan Penn.
Hi, I'm Becca.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm from the, uh, court picks office.
From what office again?
You're not up to it with me, are you?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody was...
It's very hard to get a word in, Randy.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, let's go back, run down, back down to item 10.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay, been a motion made in a second, call in favor?
Uh, Hesse?
Aye.
Bobbit?
Aye.
Aye.
12:15.
Uh, Cindy, can, can, can we get the information on when, uh, we checked out, like, the documentations that he signed when he came in and did his file paperwork?
Oh, okay, um, did Alex bring you the...
Oh, I don't know, she, okay, maybe she, I handed it to him.
If not, you need to stop this stuff out, tell me, figure out what the...
Scott, would you step out for a minute, please? Thank you.
The thing is shut off, the microphone still pick up the voices and stuff.
It's not good.
No, it's not.
Okay, you got that?
Yep, we're ready.
I must take all my papers.
You need your paper?
Yeah, I must take my paper, I'll just use the back of this one.
We found out that this doesn't always shut off, so we have to plug them.
You can, you can get a switch.
That's what I'm gonna ask Brandon about.
I don't know if I'd trust it.
I know.
This I know is cut off. I'd make a motion that we re-enter open session.
I second that. At, uh, twelve forty?
Oh my God, guys, I've got a conference call at one.
Twelve forty-eight. We are out of, uh, all in favor?
Hes, Bobbit.
Aye. We're back in regular session. I would make a motion to, uh, award Stephen Beal his ninety-six hours of vacation time, but deny him the eight hours of holiday pay because he didn't work the day before and the day after on the holiday according to the handbook.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Come on, I gotta...
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that.
Dean White and Cindy Bobbit, all in favor?
Uh, Hes.
Aye.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Very good.
Did they sign my P.O.?
Oh, no. We're already adjourned. It'll have to just wait.
I need you to pay my bills. I really do. It came through the meeting already once today.
But it didn't have the other $10 receipt that you just now handed it to me.
I did. I did hand it to you.
But you handed it to me in the hour.
Hey, we really had a...